I'm going to open the meeting since we're a little past seven and seven. We have a public hearing for C-Tech Solar, the site plan application.
If anyone is going to C-Tech sign it, if you're not, just pass it along.
We do have two pieces of correspondence, one from the building commissioner and one from Graves Engineering. The building commissioner letter dated July 2nd asked that we maintain a 30-foot setback from the property line along both sides of the street. Since this is a corner lot, it requires all structures to be located at least 30 feet from the property line. The applicant has, should be commended for a 38-foot privacy fence on Carroll Hill roadside of the project, but the privacy fence should continue another 80 to 100 feet in the northerly direction and planting should be installed in front of the fence to break up its mass. And then finally, the applicant should provide color renderings of the northerly view from the intersection of Worcester Road and southerly view from Carroll Hill Road of the proposed screening and project. The renderings will assist the community and the board to visualize the project impact on the area. And then we have a peer review letter from Mike Andrade noting a number of issues with the plan. And this afternoon, we received from, from the engineer, a response to this letter noting the changes that they've made to the plan. We haven't had a chance to review those changes that have been made and Mike Andrade hasn't commented on, on that letter that we got today. But we have with us tonight, are you Brad?
Yep, Brad Parsons.
Brad Parsons, the engineer on the project who can certainly inform us as to what the changes are and what Mike was looking for.
Thank you. Again, Brad Parsons with All Points Technology Corporation, licensed professional engineer in Commonwealth, Massachusetts. To kind of go over the project, the, I mean, on behalf of C-Tech Solar, the developer, and Mr. Santos, the property owner, one of the things that Mike had requested was an authorized letter from Mr. Santos, which we do have now and will provide that as well. The property is located at 299 Worcester Road and is behind the existing CrossFit. The board previously approved or provided an ANR for the property on May 16th, 2018, and that has subsequently been filed on the land records with the county. The project involves the installation of approximately a half a megawatt DC ground-mounted solar array. It's located on Lot 2, behind CrossFit to the north, basically abutting Carroll Hill Road here, just a worry number right here, Worcester Road, US 20, running up and down the page, Carroll Hill Road here, and north is actually pointing this way. You know, we did receive, as Bill mentioned, comments from the building commissioner as well as Mike Andres. We've gone through and feel like we are able to address all of these comments. We've already gone through and in this plan here in front of you reflects the adjustment of the solar panels to bring them out of the 30-foot front yard setback. We were able to do that without changing our LOD or the existing fence line that was originally proposed. We just ended up shrinking the amount of space we had on the easterly side from 10 feet to 6 feet. So it was very minor as far as change and juggled around the location of a couple of other modules. The additionally, we did extend, previously we had the white vinyl privacy fence stopping around here on Carroll Hill Road, and we extended it that northerly direction for about another 100 feet as well. And while I'm up here, while we didn't actually provide full visual analysis, because at the end of the day, when I think when you see the next piece here is you're not going to see anything with the white vinyl fence, other than that. And we did, the client did agree that we would agree to break up a mass by providing some plantings in front of that. But we provided sightlines from Worcester Road here, as well as Carroll Road in two locations. And when you look at these from a profile view of where our car is sitting here, the top one you see here is on Worcester Road, sitting at the intersection, looking to the left at the site itself. And basically, we went up to the location of that eight-foot privacy fence at which they would be viewing that at, and extended that line out. And the top line you see here is a passenger vehicle, which would actually be a lower vehicle, but we also did take into account an SUV and ran this at a five-foot height as well. And this actually shows too, that it just goes over that sightline, just goes over the top of the modules right here in the center of the site. Again, this is sightline, the other sightline here on Carroll Hill Road, which is again just kind of marked at the stoplight, looking directly left, same thing, you know, looking right over the top of the fence. And then this is further up Carroll Hill Road, looking south. Again, the lower line is the SUV, getting that a little more height up and being able to see down a little bit more, but in both cases, looking right over top of the modules themselves. With that, I mean, Mr. Andres or Graves Engineering's comments were, we were able to address all of those as well. The, one of the bigger ones, which actually didn't end up being a really big comment, was changing the cover type of woods fair, woods good. We weren't doing any real work in the woods area on the site and the way the model works, so it really was actually inconsequential to the overall drainage on site and it actually reduced, ended up reducing the runoff, both existing and proposed, overall. I think that is really about it. We were able to address all the other comments that Graves had. I think the only thing we did not end up addressing or would prefer to keep is the way the driveway is set up, the entrance is here, just off of Carroll Hill Road, and the white vinyl privacy fence again extends into the property about 60 feet. That's to accommodate the fire truck being able to pull in and actually park off the street safely there. So he asked about changing the gate to be in white vinyl. We're still proposing to keep it as chain link. The, again, the only thing that is actually going to end up being in the view here is the electrical transformer that is the inverters that changes over to the AC feeding the grid. And then lastly, he had a comment about possibly needing an easement on Carroll Hill Road for the electrical interconnection. However, the D mark point for National Grid will actually be on-site. So they will own, National Grid will own the line coming out to the street. With that, I'll take any questions.
Do you guys want the plan closer? Do you feel like?
Yeah, I would like to.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah, if you want to flip over to the sightlines too.
Did you have a sightline coming down the hill, down Route 20, or just at the stoplight?
Just at the stoplight.
That is a hill that comes down there and overlooking.
Because you kind of got the hill this way, but then you're in both directions, where, how far back we're sitting here, you know, there's really, you're kind of blocked either way, no matter which way you're looking in here, which is why we thought that this way, really the biggest piece would going to be somebody stop their stop at the stoplight here, which is why we kind of ran this one looking this way, as well as, you know, kind of somebody coming down south off Carroll Hill Road, and again, here looking actually at the, if the, you know, traffic's, any traffic's queued up as well. So, so it's just kind of really the way the, you know, our benefit, the way the photography worked on site, that ends up keeping the panels themselves really below that sightline.
Brad, can you show where you've extended the vinyl fence from where it was before?
Yeah, yep. So originally, the plan said the vinyl fence stopped in here, and we have extended that up this direction here, which, when we start running that sightline, is the exact reason why I ran the sightline further back here. It will help provide some shielding from that view there. And then once you get beyond that, this really, the woods in this area really starts to make up here.
Mike's comment number eight was to show Kevin a notification sign.
Yes.
Have you added that?
We, we will add it. It's, we're just trying to figure out with the property owner, Mr. Santos, exactly who that should be. He is going to be the ultimate owner of the system, so it's just a matter of who he exactly wants to be that 24-hour contact, but it is something we have no problem adding to the plans as well as the knock box or fire.
I was going to ask you that.
Yeah.
Number nine, where do you propose to put that?
We would just put it right up here next to the gate.
Right. And then comment 12, he mentions that there are some wells on the site.
Yep, there's two existing wells. One is right here, to make it clear for you guys, and then the other one is right here. And there are existing monitoring wells out there now. I haven't had a chance to understand if it's, they're his responsibility to monitor or the previous site owners, but whoever needs to monitor, whether it needs to be a double lock on the gate, or whatever they need to do to still maintain access, they will have that access.
Do you know what they are?
I have a feeling, I mean, this was an old.
Junkyard.
Junkyard site.
Oh, okay.
So I think it really has to do with, in my guess, groundwater contamination there. It is not a, I forget the numbering, the 61E, it's not a listed site on DEP though, but there are the monitoring wells themselves.
Okay.
The other thing I will note in talking with the developer, the system will be, to avoid any ground disturbance issues or minimize the ground disturbance issues, the system will be ballast mounted.
Okay.
System. And then additionally, they are looking at not trenching the electrical in, but actually doing a cable tray that will be, it's basically ground mounted, sits on cinder blocks and just runs up running over to the, to the electrical.
Can you point that up, please?
Yep. So it'll still follow the same general vicinity of the electrical line heading down this way. And obviously, that would end up being worked out on the, on the final building plans and submittal, but I mean, it would, it would run this entire length down here, ultimately following the existing electrical line to get to the equipment. At the southern end of the site. But that's, I mean, we're probably six inches to, off the ground with that.
Could you point out the fence again? I didn't see what it is.
No, no, no problem. So originally, we, we've always proposed the white vinyl fence, and I appreciate the building commissioner for commending us on something. I've never been commended in my city comments for the town before. So we originally had it all the way up to here, and he just requested we extended that 100 feet. And that's again, why I ended up running the sightline through that actually extension there as well.
Now, beyond that, is that, is that a tree line there?
Yeah, so this is a tree line here, and this gets heavily wooded, we're in probably that rate through this area. The reason for the request is probably we're in more of a transition zone here. This area here is definitely not as dense.
Okay. Conifer trees deciduous, is there?
It's a, it's a little bit of a mix.
Are you clearing any trees?
Our intent is to not clear any large caliber trees. We do have some small caliber growth that's kind of extended into the site here, and then we've got some brush in here along this side, but we are not proposing to clear any large caliber trees. Really, any shaving concerns are from, are from the south on this. We have pretty good clearing limits there, and we're restricted anyways by our 200-foot riverfront buffer, which they're, we're dealing with the conservation commission right now, but we are not proposing any clearing there.
Is any ground contamination, we'll be looking at that, just, are we concerned with that?
It's, is it a listed site?
It's not a listed site. So I mean, I think it would be handled on a, on a case basis of usually our standard note is, hey, if you smell something, say something type deal. And then I, we can go back and look at that and get a determination, but then, at the end of the day, our intent is not to take anything offsite.
So you won't be moving any soil?
No, our intent is not to move any soil offsite, yeah. Even if we had to, with the fact that we're not actually doing, the other thing is, we are actually not doing any grading on site. We may be doing some shaping here and there, but anything, if we did have to excavate even a little bit, we would end up losing that inside as well.
So the setback from the road, the front edge is 30 feet to the fence, or 32 feet to the panels?
30 feet to the panels. The fence itself, I believe we've got that at probably 10, looks like it, it looks like it varies a little bit, it's a little closer down here, but we tried to keep it around 10 to 15 feet in that area.
And the plan is to put some sort of vegetation in there? Is that, is that marked on the plan or?
It isn't right now, but I mean, we, we did agree to kind of some short vegetation, and the intent wasn't to do like the taller varieties as far as the screening, but just something low to help break up the mass.
Break up the mass of the white vinyl.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that actually close to the road?
That was, that was my thought, is, does it provide, does it, any sightline issues? Kurt, do you know within there for that fencing within that corner?
Well, they're, they're, so Kurt Meskis, building inspector, zoning enforcement officer. You have a building on the corner that is, pushes this project behind it, so when you pull up to that intersection, you have a good view to the east and the west, and it's a controlled intersection with turn signalization there, so it's one of the better intersections on Route 20, as far as that goes.
I was worried about snow removal and plowing and?
I, I don't see what the fence being 15 feet back.
Killing the vegetation in front of the fence?
It's going to get beat up, but it's, you know, it's, would hopefully be, you know, somewhat hardy, given where it is.
But the fence you said was six to six, six to 15 feet back?
Yeah, probably there is, I could give you a fact distance for you, but I mean, I would say no, it's definitely no closer than six feet to that property line there. We can propose more of a hardier shrub, that, you know, evergreen type that is low growth, that we could still handle some type of a snow on it as well, maybe even a holly of some sort.
So, and also, as I recall, the property line is not, the street, you're realizing it is not the paved line, so you have some additional buffer there.
Okay. Okay. That was my question.
So I came forward, Madam Chairman, if I may speak, to say that even though I do appreciate the sightlines being shown for you, is, is the intent of that request was is to be able to actually visualize the final product. I think that this board and the community has struggled repeatedly with engineering drawings because you folks aren't engineers, and that we have proven from what he's shown that the sightline is, is that we're not going to see the panel, but are we going to see the sea of white? Are we going to have appropriate breakup in front of it? So that's why I've been requesting in my comments that the applicants provide some color rendering to this. And the two I picked was basically, as he indicated, sitting at Route 20, looking to the left, where you're going to look over this whole thing, and coming down Carroll Hill Road, where our citizens are going to be coming down and looking to the left. I realize that in all cases, we are not going to, you know, build a 100-foot fence and obscure everything, but, you know, giving them a good representation.
Yep.
To look at. I understand Mr. Andrade made a comment about the, using the white vinyl fence. Kurt Meskis, assistant fire chief at this moment, I would say that the chain link fence would be more appropriate, more hardy to the use that it may get, rather than having this 16-foot wide vinyl gate, eight feet tall, that's going to.
Twist.
Twist and fall over over a period of time, and I don't see that there would be anything offensive in that short stint when you go by the property.
And that's just the gate area?
That's just the gate area.
This is white vinyl here and anything on this side?
No, because that's actually obscured by our, and one of the reasons why we did actually propose white vinyl, there is an existing white vinyl fence along the area there for the CrossFit, to kind of basically block that off. So it's almost a, a little bit of a continuation of that. The other thought we had is really the only thing you're, the only time you'll really be able to see in that gate is if you're physically stopped at that intersection, at the light, and basically looking and turning all the way left, you know, to be able to see it.
And at that point, it'll probably be only the D mark equipment and the.
Exactly. Yes, correct. Because the fence here is, I mean, you could see as we take that, that line across, I mean, you're really just looking at the electrical D rock equipment there. So, you know, we definitely understand the concern with the community, it's a result of solar. We understand, you know, the mortuaryum that's now in place, you know, on some of these projects, and we've done our best to serve the community in those regards as well.
We appreciate that and thank you, Kurt, because we, I think we were getting to the point where we were almost requiring the schematic, so if we could actually see what it, what's the normal personal looking.
And that's, that's why, you know, and that's something you folks can adopt as part of your requirements for submittal through, through a planning session later on. The other comment I want to make or bring to attention is, is as you pointed out, there are two monitoring wells on that property. I would be very careful and check again, because I know there were two 21Es done on that property, whether or not they've been closed out or not.
Okay.
I don't know, but then also, an adjacent property across the street is also suspect of contamination. That used to be a garage. So those monitoring wells may be from the across-the-street property.
Okay.
Or they may be from the stuff that's buried under there.
We can, we can definitely get some more information. I did, I did look on the deep website, there wasn't, it wasn't popping up as a, as a site, but we can triple check.
There were, because there was a major project proposed there, and he stuck a shovel in the ground and quickly abandoned the site.
Yep. Which again, I think is really one of the reasons why we definitely are doing the ballast mounted and our movement to the above ground cable tray as well, so.
Brad, is the property in chapter 61A or 61B, do you know?
Uh, no, no, just not.
Okay.
Do you have any more questions?
In that driveway, sufficient turnaround, Curtis, for, for the fire department? That's, has the fire department looked at these plans and?
I've looked at these plans on behalf of the fire department, and actually had communication with you.
Yeah.
On an initial, what do we need? And it's sufficient enough to get us off the road that we can, you know, not block traffic if we have a small incident, and if we have a larger incident, then we, of course, employ the police department and such to cordon off the area. But we don't find these a very high hazard from a fire perspective, and if they are on fire, as I've said before to this board and say publicly, the safety first, it's of the firefighters, and we will contain it to the area of origin.
No further questions.
So let me open it up to the public audience, please. Do we have questions?
I, I do have.
If you do, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
17 Old Worcester Road. And I saw some of these solar projects through some of these televised events, and there was talk about, we all know that there's a life expectancy of 25 to 30 years, and what is the town left with 25 to 30 years from now? Is there a bond in place to be able to remove these panels and all? So you guys are doing that every single time?
We do require a bond, and their engineer calculates it, our engineer reviews it, and then they figure out whether it's going to be a cash bond or a bank's.
Because I think I saw something in one of your meetings, that there are some out there that don't have a bond on their record, and there's a potential town liability after that.
In residential areas, we always have bonds. I think there might be one out there that doesn't.
I think we always require decommissioning bonds and landscaping bonds in residential or agricultural districts.
Okay. That was my question. Thanks.
Somebody else?
Yep.
My name's Christine Bro, I'm at 11 Prettiere Road, and I just have a question, it just occurred to me. Interstate Trail runs through there, and how close is that?
I don't think it goes through the site, does it?
It, it doesn't go through the site that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do we know how, what the distance is or?
Well.
I can tell you.
So that's Carroll Hill along there.
Where's the closest house? Just because I can show you where it is.
The closest house?
Yes. That's CrossFit.
It's probably like right.
Okay, which means the midstates over here.
Okay.
So there's a whole lot in between?
Okay.
You're welcome to clap and take a look at that.
Yeah, if, if the trailer is, is up there, in my exact sure.
It runs right next to that person's house, because it comes out, so it would be right over here.
Okay.
And then it comes down behind, because it's actually my family's property over here.
Okay.
It's a different lot, a different owner.
Yeah, and it wouldn't have, there's no easement on our property for it, so we would have a buffer between that and the solar side as well.
Yep.
Because we're not touching any of these trees to the, to the.
Yes.
Jim Reynolds, I live at 33 Carroll Hill Road. You may not be the people I'm sure you're asking this. I'm stunned that I, that this is happening, and I never heard about it. What are the requirements for people to be notified, the butters and people in the area?
The requirement is that anybody within 300 feet of the site is in a barter who is entitled to a notice of the hearing. We send it out by certified mail, so if you were outside of the 300-foot radius, you might not have gotten a copy of the, of the notice.
Where'd the 300-foot requirement come from?
State law.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, how, how far away are you from the site?
I'm a good ways down the road. I'm past Murphy Lane, I, over half a mile.
Yeah, there's a notice that goes in the paper two, twice. Legal ad, not many people would read it, but it's required.
Well, I mean, given the problems of people stunned to find out a lot of these other things going on, I'd say maybe the, maybe the notification processes need to change. Thank you.
Are the butters listed on the, on the plans at all?
Yes. There was, there was a radius map included with the original submittal, correct.
We also get the, a butters list from the assessors.
Here, but we, we originally saw the ones, the original plan with all the residences and. Do we have additional questions? Comments?
So the question is, are you satisfied or would you like?
Do we have additional questions?
I think, I think we'd like to see the visual renderings of, of the views from the road. I think that's one thing that we'd like to see, I would like to see anyways, as well as some sort of listings on what vegetation to block, the vegetation plan for, for the fencing. That's my opinion. The rest of the board can.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I, I think we need to start setting these precedents. I know with, when we have close homes, we get a little, and when we have very close butters that are asking for these things, we get a little more detail, but maybe we need to take the initiative to, to do that. Is, is it appropriate for us to ask for something in addition?
Sure, I think so.
And continuous?
Right, I was in Kurt's letter and.
I would suggest to the board, given that the response to everything that's just received today, Mr. Andrade has not had a chance to see the response.
And we haven't.
And that would give.
Anything we haven't received either.
Right, would give you sufficient time to, so if you continue it to your next Right, would give you sufficient time to, so if you continue it to your next meeting or, you know, look at the engineer here because he's going to have to ensure he's met all Mr. Andrade's comments, has time to provide those two renderings, and get back here, you know. I think, when is your next meeting?
August eighteenth, is it?
Eight, August eighth.
August eighth is our next meeting. Can we fit them in August eighth? Is that-
I make a motion, we continue this hearing to August eighth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that-
Can I ask a question?
I saw that tag coming and I didn't- It's more just a what is ultimately expected with that type of rendering? And, you know, is there a full photo sim? I mean, because these, we've done numerous renderings for numerous types of projects, so, you know.
We've received all sort of them, so what we would expect is something, it doesn't have to be completely realistic, but something that will give us, when you're parked there, when you're standing there, what you're going to see.
Okay.
I know there's tons of computer software that all of our engineers have figured out.
We've got folks in-house that do it. It's just a matter of how-
What do we want?
How detailed do you want? Because he can go a little overboard.
Feel free if you have an example to send it, you know, to Jane or Bill-
Yeah, Bill or myself, and I'll render, you know, an opinion on-
Just if you're questioning. And a list of the landscaping, whatever you plan on doing for shrubs, provide that so we can have that.
And they'll be shown on the, we'll show those actually on the rendering itself as well.
Is there anything else that anybody desires that we add so we can get this done at the next meeting?
Yep, that covers it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone see Trophone Design? Thank you.
We need to probably add the schematic upfront so we're not surprised if anybody- And we need to be, we need to add landscaping, but we'll have a, we'll add that to planning board business at our next meeting so we can just get it on record and do it right.
I think coming up with specifics for what kind of plannings we prefer to make to that started.
Anything that grows. In accordance with Section two hundred dash five point one-three and two hundred dash seven point two dot G of Charlton zoning bylaw, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven ten in the Sleckman's Meeting Room in the George C. McKinstry. On the application of Trophone Design Associates, Inc., with an address of two oh eight Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. zero one five six six, for approval of one reduced frontage lot containing approximately eight point four oh one acres for purposes of building a single-family home. The property is located on Ramshorn Road, Charlton, Mass., identified in Assessor's Map, seventy-four Block B, Lot six, and is an agricultural A district. Copies of the reduced frontage lot special permit application are available for inspection at the Planning Board office and Town Clerk's office during regular business hours. Any person interested or willing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated.
Good evening, I'm Fred Trophone. I'm representing Gavin Seifler. We're here for a reduced frontage lot special permit. The parcel was originally divided back in two thousand six with the intention of all four lots being reduced frontage lots. Three of the lots have already been built on. The remaining land, however, does not have the special permit in place, so that's what we're seeking tonight.
Do you want to come up and point out the proprietary questions on the whole? Do you want to point out to the board?
Yes, the remaining land, yeah. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen have been sold off and built on, and this is what's remaining. And this is, I think we were talking about-
And this is the entire lot that comes down here? Is it, right, so this?
Yeah, it does put down here, but it's probably down to the-
The hatch lot back there.
Yeah, and the house is actually proposed. We already have the septic approval, we already have conservation approval at the Russell Way Lane. So these other, these other three have already been built on.
And the house is going in that larger area here?
Yeah, that's right.
How much frontage is there?
Seventy-three feet.
And fifty feet is required for reduced frontage. How big is the lot?
Eight point four, sorry.
So we have a letter from the Golding Commissioner. Kurt, do you want me to summarize this, or would you like to?
I'd be happy to. So Kurt Meskis, Building Enforcement, Zoning Enforcement Officer. We were, we are still, this board is currently considering a similar plan where I append the same thing. The bylaw says that the reduced frontage portion of the lot shall, or the access portion, I'm sorry, of the lot shall not exceed six hundred feet. And I made the same comments I made in this other issue that we're having in another place in town and provided you with the color GIS map. Hopefully, Mr. Scanlon has passed that out to you showing, yes, there is a bulbous area close to the street, however, the majority of the lot is behind that six hundred-foot line. So I am recommending that you deny this special permit because this whole property was won at one time, and they could have configured all of this and gotten the same result if they had complied at the time.
Was that by law in effect?
Yes. How'd you get the other three?
Huh?
Oh, yeah, the same reduced frontage bylaw that gave you the other three.
The project was presented to get the four reduced frontage lots at the time. It's actually stated on the plan that was signed off.
Am I reading this correctly? That Lot thirteen also has a driveway that's well over that recommended?
Sorry?
On Lot thirteen, and forgive me if I'm reading this incorrectly, this is where the house is, on Lot thirteen, so that driveway is well over-
Lot thirteen, the house is there.
Okay, so on here, you're thinking of putting it where?
Why don't we use the bigger one here?
Tell us a picture.
So this is the house you were asking about. So the discussion of the bylaw is not the length of the driveway.
Okay.
The access portion, which I pinned, that is that narrow strip leading to the major portion, should not be more than six hundred feet.
Okay, and how big is it on the street portion, on the street reduced frontage?
Well, six hundred feet from the street.
Okay.
Here. The major portion of this lot is back here.
Okay.
Well, it's considered the access strip, two hundred forty.
So you're saying that they could have configured this just in a thorough-
At the time, looking at the frontages and looking at the lots they carved out, they could have done something different where all of those lots met the six hundred-foot requirement.
So these three lots, their houses are, they're existing?
Yeah.
And they're on the lot.
So this is, this is like the six hundred-foot line right here, so this lot just makes the six hundred-foot requirement, this lot makes the six hundred-foot requirement. This lot comes through here, makes the six hundred-foot requirement.
Now educate me, what is six hundred feet? Is that for like ambulance and fire departments like that?
The access portion of the reduced frontage lot does not be over six hundred feet.
So you can't set up your land where you have all these really long and then have a bunch of houses based, and that's why, right?
That's one issue. There's no prohibition of having multiple reduced frontage lots together, but you can't make this Sydney Circle problem, okay?
But I consider this sound access strip, two hundred forty.
So it's, I think it's a little easier and smaller. So they're saying that.
Are you saying the access strip goes from here? This, which is over six hundred feet.
So if I'm here, where is the driveway? Oh, this is where the house is. So here is here. And these are the houses.
Even though the house is here, the largest portion of the lot is actually out here, so it's essentially the major portion of the lot, which is a half of the area.
I realize, I'll just confirm reasons, but I think it was probably more than five. The house feedbacks a bigger portion because, again, you don't want to support a long driveway, so I don't know that I have such an issue with it being here. Just that, just that in your husband, you have all this land and to get your reduced lots, you have all these really skinny driveways, you have these here.
Do you get a case that this requires, a little bit of interest in the house and the rest of the lots?
Right.
I think they tend more to have a smaller, smaller, right?
Technically, it's not a long driveway. I'm just always careful about setting precedent because in Charlton, we have lots of land. And so we need to be careful about setting precedent about- I agree. I wouldn't mind making the exception in this case, though, only because you've got this fat portion here, so it's not like you're going to be tenant in the house, you're right next to the door, and you've got your existing other house way down here. Can you remind me, the house on this lot is?
This lot? Oh, it's back here, it's back even broken this up. This one's a little bit here.
So, Madam Chair, might I make an offer of food, dish, and comments?
Yes, please.
One, I am, you know, offering an opinion on a technical requirement. It's a special permit, the planning board can issue. And also, each special permit is considered of its own merit, so I, you know, even though you may be concerned about setting precedent-
That's why it's special.
That's why it's special. And the other thing I would suggest you do is allow, if there's any neighbors here, comment on this now before you get much deeper into this because that often may be-
The deciding factor, sure. Do we-
Is this the only weapons on the property? This area here? Or is there also?
On this particular parcel, you mean? Yeah, it's a parcel to a processing.
Nothing in the back?
Yeah, nothing in the back.
Just that little, like, seasonal river thing that goes back there, right.
I just want to point out again, back in two thousand six, they actually put the statement in here, that twelve, yeah, back in two thousand six, on this plan, we put the statement in that lot, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and remaining land are reduced frontage lots.
If we thought when we approved this, if we thought that there would be a problem, we would have, we would have, we would have pointed out that it was not a buildable lot, and we didn't.
Correct.
All right, so are we, do we, we want to open it up to some neighbors, or do you have any additional questions?
If we don't have to open it up.
All right, I'd like to open it up. Is there neighbors here, butters that have questions, comments?
No.
No?
Okay. So, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have a problem with it. Me personally, I think that if we'd had an issue, we should have said something, or the board, we should have said something back when these were proposed and first put into place. It is a special permit, which makes it very special, so I don't see a problem with it.
And back in the day, we would have, Ellen would have made sure that in big, bold letters, that it was not a buildable lot.
Correct.
So no one would ever get away with it, so-
So was that even considered when the other lots, the other three lots were accepted, that this might be buildable, or is this something-
It states it right here that it was going to be reduced frontage, so-
Then why, I guess, I could question, why wasn't it brought forward at that time to also be approved with the other lot? Why did, why did he bring these three lots up and not do this one at that time?
Do you have, do you-
You don't know?
I don't know. I suppose they all got brought forward at the same time.
It seems to me like more of an afterthought, to split it up a little bit more.
And perhaps it was, but they did, they did say, it said to reduce their area or create additional buildable lots. It's, maybe they just thought they would divide it up or something, but I don't think that's really what we have to-
Was it put in there for open space, I guess, is the reason at the time?
We would have, we would have, it would have been noted on the plan. We would have noted that clearly, so.
Yep.
Yeah, and if we had thought there was any issue as to that not being a buildable lot, we would have reconfigured it at the time.
I get the driveway thing, I just, the driveway is two hundred and forty feet, it's not, right.
So once again, I do worry about the precedent of setting up something like this where the majority of the lot is much further than six hundred feet away. And if we approve that, then going down the road, we may have to approve others of a similar design. I think with Curtis making the recommendation that we not do it, we hire him as the professional to provide guidance on what he feels and how he interprets the zoning rules, I tend to lean more towards what he's saying on this, and I don't think it meets the intention of lots. I mean, this is a, it's agriculture area, this is a zone, which is, you know, large lot residential, houses, you know, some spread out, and that's kind of the character that I think we want to have. So I question whether that's the right thing to do.
I mean, I, I just think that these, the residential area is changing a little bit, and I hate to just have this be just barren, unusable land. If the driveway was six hundred or even five hundred feet, I would say, you know, now there's kind of like a safety issue and- Correct. But to have- Yes. To have the acreage there and just the issue being the frontage, maybe it should have been planned better, could have been, would have been, but do we really want to not, not allow them to use this- Agreed. This buildable house lot?
One option, you know, following up on Don's thought, would be to have the applicable code of the ZVA for variance to exceed the six hundred-foot access strip limit.
But there isn't, I mean, you're talking about this access?
Yes. Or to waive that or to-
Can, do we have the right to, do they have to go before ZVA if we say it's okay?
If you, you can approve it. You can approve the special permit.
But will they still have to go before ZVA?
No.
Okay.
But if we say no, they can go before ZVA and get a variance through ZVA, yes.
And then come back.
Yes.
I think that's complicated. I do too. I just think it's complicating things. It isn't, if it was a smaller lot, if the driveway was longer, if there was other- If it was going to be right next to another house, again, I think that would be an issue. If I had these two neighbors say, I don't want, that's unfair, you're ruining our neighborhood. But it's, but looking at Ramshorn Road, it isn't, it's, the houses are-
Correct.
Are pretty well situated up there.
Neighbors have been notified for the plans?
Yes. By way of information, it's a special permit requiring a supermajority, since you are four members, all four have to vote in favor. Supermajority could be approved.
Well, I will vote, I mean, I will make a motion to accept the lot as it is under special permit.
Did we, wait, did we close the hearing?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Okay, you have a, you have a second?
I do.
I'm not going to second. You have a second?
I second it, but-
Okay. You can.
So, it's denied.
So, what's the vote?
It's.
I think it's two-two.
Two-two, we don't have a draw.
The vote no?
No.
So, what are the votes then, no?
No.
No, okay.
Yes.
So, I guess the thought then would be you could go to the ZBA for the variance.
What's that again?
You could go to the ZBA for the variance.
I'd go to the ZBA.
Huh?
To the ZBA?
There's only one of those.
Okay, so it's, the vote was split?
Yes, sir.
They would, they could look at the, this access point and be able to give you a variance if they think that would be reasonable.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There should be a clipboard going around, we do need you to sign in if you're here at the treehouse, but I don't know where the clipboard was left.
We're reopening.
Is this a continuation of the last public hearing?
So, this is the continuation for the Treehouse Brewing Special Permit?
Yep, good evening, my name is David Feis with McClure Engineering, I'm the project civil engineer. With me tonight is Kim, Kimberly Glonsky with Treehouse Brewing, and Damian Gudrow with Treehouse Brewing, and also Peter with Austin Design, the project architect. The last meeting, there were some minor revisions that we were required to make with Graves' comment letter. We made those minor revisions, submitted them to the planning board and to Graves'. We received the letter on July 3rd from Graves' Engineering, just acknowledging that we've addressed all their comments. So, I'd be happy to take any additional questions you may have tonight, or if there's any additional information.
Can you give us just a minute, we don't have copies of the Graves' report, and just give us a second to redo that. So, it really just looks like number four is the only one that's open. Will you, for us non-engineers, will you talk about number four and why that seems to be still open?
Oh, sure, I'm actually kind of checking on the plan also.
We would love that.
Item number four has to do with, if, if we could ask for check dams along this channel that leads down to the detention base in the fore bay from the new parking area. Given the steep slope of that area, check dams really probably wouldn't have worked as well. So, what we have to do is just use a higher diameter rip wrap, I think we're going with the proposed, you know, six to eight inch diameter rip wrap, DOT spec. We're also rip wrapping the entire fore bay at the bottom of the hill, just to help prevent any sort of erosion that might happen.
And what is rip wrap?
Basically, it's those of the larger rocks, you see, they're the angular shape, like you see a lot on the sides of highways, they're anywhere from four to eight inches in diameter.
Thank you. But it is less open, that any erosion in the field will need to be addressed if it does happen?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, as you're all aware of, there's some serious traffic concerns with, with Treehouse. At the last meeting, the traffic consultant from Vinesse Associates spoke about the measures that they've taken in terms of signage to direct traffic, to prevent some of the left turn lanes heading westbound. In addition, they've added some new parking towards the rear of the property, so that will alleviate some of the queuing on Route 20, and with the long driveway to the back, allow cars to queue inside the site. Other expanding of hours of operations, so it'll be less congestion when they, when they are open. The police chief had sent in a letter to the board for the last meeting, indicating the improvements, reduction of accidents, and citations of illegal movements that the police have issued in the last five and a half months. And Officer McGrath came and spoke to that at the last meeting as well. So, I think that moving forward, we're solving a lot of the traffic issues on the site. They're still working with MassDOT, perhaps David could update us on that, but there's a state highway, DOT has jurisdiction over the curb cut and the improvements to the highway that might be necessary.
Okay.
I understand that they're still actively working together to propose some measures, I don't have, don't know what they are, but perhaps David could update us on that?
Yeah, sure, I know Vinesse Associates, Jeff Dirk P. is there in the process of finalizing their traffic study. And that will be part of, there's a submittal to the MEPA, Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act office, which will include that traffic study and his final recommendations. And again, you know, he, there, Vinesse is working with DOT to come up with a solution to the issues of the curb cut.
And when is that expected?
The filing should be probably within the next 30 days, and I know the planning board will receive a copy, as required by state law.
Do we want to wait till we see that, before we accept this?
We have no control over that whatsoever, I mean, we can see it, but if it doesn't happen, then, then it's kind of on them, if that makes any sense, it doesn't, it doesn't affect ours.
Then there was some, can I, another question? There was some, some talk about the dirt lot that's down below, it's a temporary parking lot. Is that still going to be used as temporary parking or overflow parking, is, is that the intention?
Correct.
And does that meet all the engineering specs that we would expect, because it's, it's more used, it's more used than it's not used?
Correct, and that's part, the intent of the project is actually to create that parking up on the top of the property, so that most likely wouldn't be necessary.
So, you'll, you'll alleviate some of the parking that's, that's done down below, too?
Now, you revised the plan to show the reserve parking area, so the board is actually approving the design of that lot tonight?
Yes. Well, actually, again, the original intent was never to sort of make that lower parking area, you know, permanent parking. So, basically what we, what Graves had asked us to do, because originally, we were only going to build a partial buildout of the upper parking area. So, in order to, we provided a second sheet, sheet 5A, which actually shows the full buildout of the upper parking area, so that that can be improved as well. Originally, we were going to build, I think, around 74 parking spaces initially, to see how that worked out, leaving a strip around the outside as grass, you know, to be, you know, improved on in the future if needed. So, as part of it, we also designed, fully designed the whole parking buildout, the whole 134, 135 spaces.
And has Graves reviewed that, do we have?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mike suggested that the plan be revised to show that.
And he's seen that and started with that, yes.
Do we want to open this up to public, comments or questions?
Seeing none, hearing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It seems that we're pretty clear of any issues.
They've done everything we asked them to do.
Yep. Looks great and.
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, and Bill and I have talked about this, but this was a special permit that had some conditions on it. They did give open space to an appropriate agency, and that special permit needs to be modified as part of your approval.
With the, with all the standard conditions and.
You put that as part of the conditions?
Sure, to modification, there is no special permit, all previous conditions apply?
Yes.
Now, before we open the next public hearing, I have to abstain to, will we have quorum?
Yeah, we got three.
On the, that's the Gunter, we said, Frank Risher, he had to meet with Conservation at eight o'clock, so he asked if we could move him to the end of the meeting?
Good. I'm sorry. He had to meet with Conservation at eight, so he's been moved to the very end of the meeting.
This, what is, was the hearing?
Yes.
Was that a question?
I think you should open the hearing.
So, we're going to go down to the.
And then just continue until six, seven, nine, or something like that.
Do I have that to be?
So, the next hearing is?
Yes.
Want to open that public hearing, then continue, is that what?
Yeah, we're going to open it and just kind of keep it open until the end of the meeting, if that makes any sense. All right, so I am opening this, the Gunter Estates. However, I, we're going to keep it open until the end, just because of the timing, he's in with Conservation right now, just, just. In accordance with MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81-T, in the Charlton Planning Board Subdivision Regulation, Section 3.3.12. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 18th, 2018, at 7:30 in the Selectman's Meeting Room, in the George C. McKinstry Building, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. On the application of Gunter LLC of Massachusetts Limited Liability Company, 580 Cal Principal, Suite 2, Monterey, California. Requesting the planning board to rescind its approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Gunter Estates, Charlton, Massachusetts, flexible definitive subdivision. The subdivision is located southerly off of Horn-Homestead Road and Boucher Drive. The plan is recorded in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 902, page 39. The subdivision is located on the following assessors parcels, map 40-B-3, map 40-B-4, map 40-B-4, 4, 5.2, and map 40-B-8. Copies of the definitive subdivision plan are available for inspection at the planning board office and town clerk, town clerk's office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Now, again, we're just going to keep this open until the end of the meeting, so he has a chance to come back from Conservation.
Or as soon as he comes in.
Or as soon as he comes back.
We'll take him, come in as soon as he comes in.
All right.
Can I just ask, who's he?
The engineer.
Oh, okay.
That will be presenting. Go on.
Thank you.
The Property Solutions Reduced Frontage.
Opening the hearing.
Thank you.
And is there's a clipboard going around, I don't know where it was left.
There's a clipboard that should be going around the room, if you could please sign in. Oh, is it under?
It's up on my.
We already know you're here.
Thank you, Curtis.
In accordance with Section 200-4, .2, .D, .8, and 200-5, .13, and 200-7, .2, of Charlton's zoning bylaw. The Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 18th, 2018, at 7:35 in the Selectman's Meeting Room, in the George C. McKinstry Building, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. On the application of Property Solutions Real Estate and Contracting LLC, 80 Hagerty Road, Charlton. For special permits for two proposed reduced frontage lots and one common driveway of 973 feet in length to serve the two lots, for the purpose of constructing a single-family home on each lot. Lot one contains approximately 9.9 acres, and lot two contains approximately 8.9 acres. The property is located easterly of Hammond Hill Road and northerly of Oxbow Road, identified as Assessors Map 22, Block A, Lot 5, and is in an agricultural zone district. The copies of the reduced frontage lot, special permit application and common driveway, special permit application, are available for inspection at the planning board office and town clerk's office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. I will, why don't you start the presentation, and then we'll.
Do you mind if I stand up here?
That's, that's perfect.
Thank you.
Don't fall.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Scott, I'm with CFS Engineering. We have prepared the, the, all special permit applications here before you this evening. Also with me is, is Rick LeBlanc, he's the property owner, and owner of Property Solutions Real Estate Contracting LLC. The overall intent of this project is to create two single-family house lots, one for Rick and one for his son. Rick has been working on this project for some two-plus years, and working with the property, evaluating that property, speaking with a lot of town officials, the previous town planner that was on board at that time. We started with him as well. We've met with Bill a couple of times, subsequent to actually, right before filing all these applications, and we actually met with the zoning enforcement officer as well. The plan has been before the Conservation Commission with regard to its delineation of all as well and resource areas. So, the, the information that you see on here is, is up to date and accurate with regard to, well, and delineations. The, again, the, the overall intent here is to develop two single-family house lots for Mr. LeBlanc and his son. Under existing conditions, prior to any development here, we have 18.8 acres total, zoned, agricultural. And we have actually three points of access, what you're looking at, this, this plan here is in existing conditions as the property sits right now. We have Oxbow Road that is on the southerly side of the site, and we have Hammond Hill Road, which is on the westerly side of the site. We have three means of access, or three points of frontage, two over here on Oxbow, and a third over here on Hammond Hill. The, as I already spoke about, the, the wetland resource areas, there's a distinction of the two green colors here on this plan. What you have, the, the olive color areas are the wetland delineated resource areas. And the greener color, this older greener color, it represents essentially what, the property's essentially entirely wooded, except for a very small portion here by Hammond Hill Road. So, we're here to discuss two special permit applications. The first is a reduced frontage application to create two single-family house lots off of utilizing. off of utilizing the existing frontage already present. We have over here on Oxbow Road, we have greater than the fifty-foot minimum required. We have sixty, sixty feet at this location, and sixty-three plus some tents over in that location. Excellent, sixty-three, seventy-four here, and sixty-fifty-one. These are the two locations that are gonna create the frontage for the reduced frontage lots. So what we have is Lot One that extends up into this area here, and we have Lot Two, which extends back into that area here. So we have the required frontage for both of those lots. The area for those lots that we have on Lot One, we have nine point nine acres. Lot Two has eight point nine acres, well in excess of the minimum five acres each required. The minimum building setback, the building cannot be any closer than two hundred feet to an existing street. We have nine hundred plus feet to the location of this building off of Oxbow Road, and we have greater than a thousand feet to this one off of Oxbow Road. The, the next requirement under the bylaw would, it talks about that six hundred foot strip portion needing required front, or the required lot width of a hundred and seventy-five feet at that location. On Lot One, the distance here is two hundred and sixty feet, and then it widens out well over the one seventy-five. We've actually added a specific dimension on this plan here for Lot Two, which is aligned parallel to Oxbow Road, six hundred feet back, and that width at that location is one seventy-nine point one-one, so greater than the one seventy-five minimum required. The plan also must bear a statement with regard to what the purpose of this is for. For, to create two lots under the reduced front, special permit requirement. And lastly, for the special permit for the reduced frontage, a minimum of two-thirds of the property created must be upland area, not well and resource area. That's the case in each. We have Lot One actually has two point two acres of upland area, well in excess of the forty thousand square feet required. And Lot Two has six point one acres of upland area. Do we want to talk about this particular plan before moving on to the common driveway?
I'd like to do both.
You wanna do both?
Go ahead.
Okay. The common driveway. The common driveway, this is a, this scale that we were just looking at is one inch equals eighty, I believe. Yeah, one inch equals eighty feet. This is at one inch equals forty, and what we've done is blow into the, the common driveway area. What we're proposing to do is access our common driveway off of Hammond Hill Road. One, it's a lot shorter to get to both of the lots, and secondly, one of the major important factors here, environmentally, it's a lot better. We're not gonna have to access through large forces of wetlands to get here. You can see these, the greener areas, and there's a cart path that runs over here. We'll actually work our way through, and you can see that on this blown-up plan. We actually work our way along the lot line, turn in through the property, avoid these two wetlands coming in through the middle. There's an existing cart path right here, we're crossing that, and then we get to the major developable portion of the property. To do this, we would have to construct a common driveway at nine hundred and seventy-three feet in length to do that, to be able to get back to this buildable portion of the property, and that's what we're trying to get that back to. But we're restricted here by wetlands. We have wetland pockets over here, and this is really the major developable portion of the property. To be able to do that, we need to be able to construct the common driveway at nine hundred and seventy-three feet. But it really doesn't come under your jurisdiction or review. By doing this, we're able to, under the Wetlands Protection Act, minimize the amount of wetland disturbance for the overall project to less than five thousand square feet, which is a pretty good goal, and, and that we achieved in, in this whole development of the common driveway. The, under the common driveway provisions under the zoning bylaw, maximum of two lots for a common driveway. We have no more than two lots. The length, the maximum length is five hundred feet, so we're exceeding that by four hundred and seventy-three feet. We've actually already applied to the ZBA for our variance to, to exceed the common drive length. So that's in the process. We don't have a hearing scheduled for that until the middle of August, but we've got the process going. And I think you've probably seen a review letter by the zoning officer indicating such. We have the required frontage on the street, we have the, the frontage down on Oxbow Road, both in excess of sixty feet, greater than the fifty-foot minimum required. The drive is eighteen feet wide the entire length. The maximum grade permissible is twelve percent. We have a real short area of about twenty-five feet that we're in, like eleven point three-three, so we don't quite exceed that, but it's just to minimize the amount of work coming down from this area to be able to take access down and meet the, the appropriate grade. But beyond that, we're looking at, we've got five percent coming in off the street, and we've got one, one, one. Really kind of work the whole driveway to the existing grade, so we're gonna minimize the amount of overall disturbance. And then lastly, the, the, there needs to be provision at the, the end of the, of the common driveway for emergency apparatus to be able to maneuver on their specific requirements of that. It's gonna be, has to be a minimum of thirty-five feet long, and it can't be greater than a two percent grade. It's not greater than two percent, and it's thirty-five feet beyond the actual driveway to provide that turnaround area. So other than the, the variance, we are in a hundred percent compliance, or the, the actual common driveway, we're in a hundred percent compliance with both the special permit provisions for the reduced frontage and common driveway. Rick, anything to add to that? Do you think I can touch on everything?
I think you did.
Certainly, yes. Hope to hear any questions, comments, concerns with regard to our project.
Kurt, would you like to, instead of me reading?
You want to sit down?
Yes.
Slide down one.
So Kurt Meskis, Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement officer. As the applicant has already acknowledged, the bylaw requires or only permits a common driveway to be five hundred feet in length. That has been, we had a technical meeting, we went over all these issues, and, and they're well aware that they need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance on that length. I'm not gonna argue the merits of the variance or not, but you can pretty well see from, you know, the, the presentation that was, that was well conceived here, that, you know, there are considerable wetlands on the property, and that certainly is an overriding issue in this project. So I think they probably have a pretty good case to, to grant that, to get that variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. But at this time, you know, I would say that they can't be issued a special permit for the driveway. You could probably issue them the special permit for the reduced frontage lots, they comply. And as we see, they worked with the layout to, you know, comply with the spirit and intent, and, and what I've pinned repeatedly about this overly-long choke-down issue that we're running across lately.
Kurt, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
So let's just pretend that we approve it, ZBA denies it, so now they have two lots with no driveways?
They have two lots and one driveway because there's no restriction on the length of a single-family home, single-home driveway. There's only a length stated in our zoning bylaw and parking regulations when you have a common driveway.
Thank you.
So they would have to find another means of access into one of the lots, then?
Or build one house.
Or just build one house.
Right. So Mike Andrade hasn't had a chance to review the plan yet. I think the common driveway plan should be reviewed by an engineer to make sure it conforms.
For such, for just two lots, I kind of went, okay, wow, a lot of stuff going on there, so I would definitely feel comfortable with his review. I think he needs to kind of get a say in there.
Do you want to break this into two parts? Do you want to break it into the subdivision or the dividing?
The, the reduced frontage and then the common...
Yeah, the two reduced frontage lots, and then worry about the driveway later and their access to it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go on separately anyways, so...
But for their sake, they prob, they're gonna go to a Plan B if we do something here versus this, right?
Right, just... One thing, it, just in my mind, I just want to clarify, there are two separate applications. So the reduced frontage certainly could be acted upon. The common driveway, my recommendation would to be to extend that one, to give Graves Engineering an opportunity to, to take a look at the, the information, to make sure what we presented is accurate. And then lastly, I'm sure there's some abutists.
You're gonna get the ZBA thing done.
Yeah, and then, yeah, so I, I guess under, our, our preference would be act on the, the reduced frontage, continue the common driveway until we get to ZBA and get our variance. Or you could act on the common driveway contingent upon obtaining a variance.
Kurt, what is the legality of that? Can, do we, do we just, do we have to?
I, I think you need to...
We need to refuse it.
Make sure they get the variance before you would approve the common driveway.
Yep.
If you can't approve it with a violation of laws.
That's, so...
And you've also asked for Mike Andrade to review this driveway, so there's two things that would merit a continuance.
For the driveway portion, do you want to continue both of them, or do you just want to, do we want to get some public opinion on them?
I mean, honestly, if they don't get their driveway, it's not our problem, if that sounds off. But if, but we can...
They, they, they still want two lots.
Although, but you understand what I'm saying, so if we can get one out of the way, then you guys can plan ahead, if that, does that sound good? And then we can work on...
I agree.
But Graves Engineering hasn't approved, hasn't reviewed any of this as, as of yet. I would like Graves Engineering to approve both portions before we go any further.
Does Graves have input on the reduced frontage lots that, or is it only on the common driveway?
He hasn't had a chance to look at it, so I don't have any input.
Alright, so we want to just continue?
Let's do that.
I do have one question that could possibly be answered, Kurt maybe. The reduced frontage is off of Oxbow Road, is that correct? Your reduced frontage spaces is on Oxbow Road, but your driveway's gonna come in on Hammond Hill Road. Is that...
There's nothing in our bylaw that requires the driveway to be over your frontage.
Okay, that's what I, that was my question, thank you.
And, and I would, I mean, it's, it's the board's druthers if they continue both hearings or only one. I don't know, Bill, what would Mike Andrade review on a reduced frontage lot? The lot technically, the two lots technically meet the requirements. I, I raise no objections, I don't think there are any technical objections to it. Neighborhood input still needs to be taken on those two reduced frontage lots, but I think the board would be clear to, if they so desired, to issue a special permit for the two reduced frontage lots, and that would move the process for the applicant ahead, and only leave the common driveway issue open for a continued hearing.
Does Graves normally review our reduced frontage?
Normally, they comment, from a zoning compliance perspective. But I think, you know, Kurt feels comfortable with last meeting in terms of the bylaws.
Give Graves some business, and let him, and let him...
Let's hear from the people.
Do we have, we're definitely gonna continue, most likely continue both, but can we hear some, for some abutists to get some?
How you doing? My name's Roland, eight o'clock. I've been in Charlton for thirty-four years on forty-two Oxbow Road. Now, my understanding that a roadway's coming from Oxbow Road to these houses, or is it coming behind Hammond Hill Road?
Behind Hammond Hill.
Hammond Hill.
Hammond Hill Road.
Okay. Well, there's a big concern as far as the wetlands go down where I am right now, you know where the pond is right there? The lady that owns the house is down behind me in the corner here, and six weeks ago, with a little bit of rain that we had, they, they actually took a canoe from their house to, to their mailbox to get their mail. So it's a, it's a wicked flood zone, the town knows about it, and nothing has been done in all the years I've been here about it. Now, I came here twenty years ago at a meeting here with, Mr. O'Malley was filling in his back of his property, and he, he said that he would put a fence on the back line of his property, it wouldn't fill up any, anymore. And he also said that the culvert zone, the culvert sack that goes across Route twenty, do you familiar with that? He was supposed to be responsible to clear that at all times so that, so that it would be cleared. That was written and agreed on, to, to the town of Charlton. And I went down there last week, and there's still all kinds of trees and everything blocking that, so that's why we have flood plot problems there. Now, that's something that he signed, and he was supposed to take care of, and he didn't follow up on it. So my concern is all the wetlands it's gonna have from these houses going up there.
If you're saying additional, additional water, flooding...
Additional water coming in from Hammond Hill Road back towards Oxbow Road.
Who, who, who would do that?
Conservation.
Conservation, though.
Is it Conservation that's looking at it?
They have to go before Conservation. Well, you know, Mike was saying, look at the stormwater impacts on the driveway.
And Mike wouldn't get the...
Conservation would look at, have, have you been before them for the wetland?
No, we have not been before them. We should be before them within the next, next month.
So the wetlands would answer your question.
The rain, the rain that we got last night, the lady's property is underwater right now.
If I may. As part of our due diligence in preparing our information and reviewing everything to, to prepare our plans, because we're all licensed when we do this stuff.
I understand that.
We need to identify whether or not this is actually within a flood hazard zone as identified under your local FEMA maps and things of that nature. We, the, the surveyor on the project has identified that no portion of this property is within, down to here flood zone. However, it doesn't mean what he's saying is incorrect. What it could mean is that those culverts are either undersized, or dilapidated, or clogged, or a lot of things are going on that's not allowing that water to, to go through those culverts correctly.
I understand that, but on the other hand, too, you people bought the property from a neighbor of ours, Dawn, and, and at the time when Dawn was living there, he came here many a times and applied for a permit because he wanted to build a house in the back of his property, and he was told by the town he couldn't. So I don't know why all of a sudden things can change. That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, we, we do have an engineer looking, look at the groundwater and the, any additional impact in, in the, in the neighborhood, so that's something that will be done as, as part of the, as, as part of the plan. Now, for the groundwater problem, that's completely not, the water that's there, the flood, that's completely not us, and who would, who would we refer them to, to, to?
Well, I think if there's a problem with the culvert, it'd be the highway surveyor.
No, but it isn't so much the culvert sack, it's behind the house that they're talking about, in the back of the lot there.
It's not a town culvert.
Is it personal?
The culvert I'm talking about, we had a problem with this twenty years ago, and we addressed it with O'Malley. He was supposed to take care of it, and it wasn't done every year by him. But the water is actually coming behind the house that these, that, my neighbor bought the house from these people. Behind her house, all the water's coming off of that hill down towards here, so what are you gonna do to stop that?
So why don't we, Mike, look at that?
Yeah, we'll have the engineer can look at it. We, I mean, we...
We should continue both, then.
We'll continue both for that, so we definitely...
But also, that, that would have to be done prior to getting any building permit, so, you know, all we're looking at is making them two separate... know, all we're looking at is making them two separate lots and approving, you know, reduced frontage. When it goes in front of a building permit, that would all have to come out there, too. So we could.
With lots being built up on a hill like that, everything's gonna run down.
That would, that would have to be.
Right, okay.
Well done, too, so.
All right, my name's Richard Fugit. I reside at forty Oxbow Road, been a resident of Charlton for about thirty-one years now. And I actually wrote a letter for you to read so you can go over. I know your time's precious, but as all I'm saying, the problem that I see is by clearing the lots, you're gonna be removing trees, and I have studies done by Penn State, FEMA, and a couple other, and it shows that by changing from a wooded area to a suburban area, which a wooded, a home area is, it changes it from ten to forty percent of the rain is gonna flow down, it's not gonna be absorbed by the trees. I have all the numbers in here, one nine-year-old tree absorbs sixty-seven percent of the rain that falls. We're talking about a million gallons of additional water a year by one, one acre lot. And as he said, our property can't take it. I watched an eighty-year-old woman, gotta be taken out by a town truck a few years ago because the ambulance actually started to float when they were going down the pickup truck. I got pictures right now if you wanna see from the rain we had last night. Her property's underwater now, just three inches of water there now.
If you could print out those photos and submit them to the board.
I will, can I do it to a?
Email.
Yes, email.
You'll get it, and.
Our emails are, you can.
Send it to my email.
Bill and Jane's, our admin, their email is right on our website. If you'll just send them.
I certainly will, and like I said, the numbers are here. I didn't make it up, it's all taken off of various lots. And also, I believe, there's a diamondback turpenny living in the pond. It's an endangered species in Massachusetts. All right, I've helped it across the road several times over the past ten years.
What is it?
A diamondback turtle.
It's a turtle. Oh, turtle.
Yeah, big turtle.
That was not the.
I got neighbors that have helped, Mr. Rose has helped it across the street numerous times, so, you know, it lives there, it's lived there for years. I'm, I'm concerned about the runoff, I'm concerned about fertilizer coming down in there. It doesn't take much, I think it says, less than one degree rise in the temperature of the water will affect the organisms living in there and thus.
So.
Wildlife, wild, you know?
So this will be, this will be a big, those questions will be a conservation clearly question.
Okay, you said you were gonna have it in two weeks? I never received a word.
It'll be, it'll be posted, too, so you can, you can actually call cost of conservation and just get, and get the date and the time.
Totally agree.
And any of the, the conservation issues and the endangered animals, that's not something that we consider, but the, but the, but the, any additional runoff that the houses would create, that is our review, and that's what our engineer will be reviewing.
Okay, and also, it shows that, you know, my septic system fifteen years ago wasn't near any water. Now the water's like a foot away from it. I'm worried about my septic system, it will become contaminated. This has all happened over the course of the last fifteen years, we've had a lot of changes to the neighborhood, topography. Yeah, and the other thing is, in your, you know, in the general law, zoning by law, it says that you wouldn't pass this if it was a nuisance or created a hazard to the neighbors. And I do believe this will create a nuisance and a serious hazard to our way of life down there, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll send the pictures, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, be good.
Hi, I'm Monica Nelson, I live on thirty-three Oxbow. I actually bought the property from him, so I'm right in between his two pieces. I bought the property three years ago, and the wetland has significantly grown since I bought it. There's a family of beavers that have moved in and they've made some dams. So I know you said it's not a flood zone, but I think it's becoming a flood zone. There's culverts on either side of my house, they can't handle the runoff of the water that we have now. There's a new beaver pond by a young road, that water's coming down towards us. So, but he talked about me kayaking to the driveway, I was able to kayak completely around my house. That was the time when it, the, the road, Oxbow Road was actually flooded as well. So we can't handle the water that we have right now. So my request is, what will be done to help compensate for any new runoff that comes through? And the beavers, which are on your property.
Do what you want, will you?
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know, does, does, I have, beaver's definitely not our problem.
It's getting conservation.
But I think, I think that there's been times when beavers have been removed and moved, and I know it's all.
Relocated.
Relocated, and that's something that you guys can.
Mr. Gerard is very familiar with that and works with the Board of Health, with the issuing agent for these beavers, so when they go, when this project goes to conservation, it certainly would be appropriate maybe for the planning board to send a note over that said numerous people expressed concerns about the flooding, some of them may be related to beavers and culvert issues, which would be a highway department's issue.
Can we, can we get on record to have you or Jane work on getting, getting the letter out, just so, it's in our minutes now, to get a, a letter out to make sure that it's flagged for somebody else to, to review to see if the problem can be fixed and coming from us and make it a little attention.
I also am on the border, I live at forty-three Oxbow Road, and I've lived there forty years.
Just name, just for the background.
Marion DeSaulnier.
Thank you.
I'm on the list. But I have seen the water problem increase significantly in the last couple of years. In the winter, it's a solid ice in front of the, that, that house there, because the water just backs up and runs over the road. The roads have been closed several times in the past few years. And I know what the land behind there looks like because my land runs along it. And there is some dry areas back there, but it's also a lot of wetland mixed in around it. There might be a lot of acreage, and maybe you could put a house there, but it's, I'm afraid of the impact that it's gonna have on the wet, the water. So I don't wanna take up too much more time because we're kinda all saying the same thing, but I just wanted to be heard.
Thank you.
I think we understand, thanks.
Alright, so do we have a motion to continue?
Make a motion, we continue the public hearing?
So, a second.
Before we do that, when would you like to come back?
The meeting with ZBA is August, we should do it after that?
Yep.
I think it's August seventeenth or eighteenth?
That sounds correct.
So September?
So we have a September.
September fifth and nineteenth. September. So here's the draft agenda so far. We have, so.
We have penciled in Valley Queen Grove for September fifth, so you probably don't wanna be here for that.
We could be after them if you wanna, if you want it about eleven-thirty.
Okay, we'll take the next week.
We'll just do the next.
Which is September.
Nineteenth.
September nineteenth.
Nobody ever wants to go after them.
Nope. So by then, we'll have the variance, you'll have Graves look at everything, and we should all be good, too.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if you, and if you wanna do a heads-up thing with the, with the beaver problem, too, we'll.
Yeah, the conservation, I know he's putting in, beginning of next week, he thought it might be in time for the next meeting, but he wasn't sure because of the advertising, so I don't know if it's gonna be the next meeting or the meeting after.
I don't wanna put, you know, push that to, we'll send a letter.
Yeah, how about the, as far as the, from what I'm hearing, it seems like the culvert at Oxbow Road is not, is holding up a lot of water. Is that something that we should, I should talk to somebody in advance?
Probably not a bad idea to get in front of that.
I would, I mean, the, cause at least give a call to the highway department to see.
Something I should do.
I, I, take initiative, it's, I mean, instead of slowing up the process.
Mentioned conservation, too.
Okay, yeah, actually, yeah, Glenn and, but the conservation has had a conversation with me about, I don't know.
Todd?
Todd, yeah, but I can go to highway department, too. Cause I do know what does.
So for the record, let's do two continuances because there's, there's, two public hearings, just for the record.
I'll make a motion to continue the second public hearing.
Second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will we be filing the culvert beaves up?
Absolutely.
It'll be September.
We already have, Sarah, we already have a date, it'll be.
September nineteenth.
September nineteenth.
September nineteenth?
Yeah, correct.
September thirty?
We don't know time, you can always call the office and it will be posted, too.
Do you want me to run down the conservation and see if Gunter is done down there so he can come in here?
Yep, he's.
Is he here?
Gunter is here.
Oh, he's here. Okay. 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 You're, we've been waiting.
Seats are warm.
We already opened your hearing, so.
Okay.
Frank, have a teeny one.
It's been a day. Is there a sign-in sheet?
There's a sign-in sheet for the Gunter project going around.
You can't see the record, I'd like to read the portion, stay long.
Or maybe we go to the back room.
In the corner.
Oh, you already read the public notice.
Yeah, we already read the public hearing notice.
So what I'd like to do is read into the record the portion of the subdivision control law, which governs our rescissions of subdivision plans, so that the board and the audience know what's required in order to do that.
Could you move closer to the mic?
Sure. A planning board on its own motion or on the petition of any person interested shall have the power to modify, amend, or rescind its approval of a plan of a subdivision, or to require a change in a plan as a condition of which retaining the status of an approved plan. All of the provisions of the subdivision control law relating to the submission and approval of a plan of a subdivision shall, so far as app, be applicable to the approval of the modification, amendment, or rescission of such approval, and to a plan which has been changed under this section. So that's why we have to have a public hearing. No modification, amendment, or rescission of the approval of a plan of a subdivision, or changes in such plan, shall affect the lots in such subdivision which have been sold or mortgaged in good faith and for a valuable consideration subsequent to the approval of the plan, or any rights pertinent thereto, without the consent of the owner of such lots and of the holder of the mortgage or mortgages, if any, thereon, provided, however, that nothing herein shall be deemed to prohibit such modification, amendment, or rescission when there has been a sale to a single grantee of either the entire parcel of land shown on the plan, or of all the lots not previously released by the planning board. So that ensures that if, if a person had bought a lot shown on one of the subdivision roads, and if that plan is then rescinded, that person would have no access off of, off of a road, so he would be affected and therefore would have certain rights. Then it continues, so as far as unregistered land is affected, no modification, amendment, or rescission of the approval of a plan, or a change in a plan under this section, shall take effect until, one, the plan is as originally approved, or a copy thereof, and a certified copy of the vote of the planning board making such modification, amendment, rescission, or change, and any additional plan referred to in such vote have been recorded. Two, an endorsement has been made on the plan originally approved as recorded, referring to such vote and where it is recorded. And three, such vote is indexed in the grant or index under the names of the owners of record of the land affected. I won't read the last part because it's a flash registered land. So that's the task of the planning board tonight is to decide whether the plan should be rescinded, in which case it resorts back to the previous lot arrangement and ownership of the, of the owner, and whether there's any lots that have been affected because of rights that were granted by the owner of the subdivision that would, that the board needs to take into account in making a decision.
Frank DeCary with Burton Engineering, representing Gunter LLC, and as stated, we're here this evening to request that the subdivision Gunter Estates be rescinded, the reason being that he wasn't able to sell it, essentially. He didn't find a buyer to build the roads and to sell the lots off of it and do the road costs. He doesn't feel that it's a viable way to move forward with the property, and so he'd like to rescind the subdivision, and in doing so, he will also be filing for A and Rs to create a reduced frontage lot for the solar site where the solar was created. So in his, in regards to the rescinding and how it would affect the solar site, the solar site comes in off of Homestead, Homestead Road and has a T turnaround, so if the subdivision goes away, the solar site will still function as it presently is. So I don't feel that it'll have any adverse effect on the, on the solar project. He's also gonna be submitting for the reduced frontage lot for the solar site to make that a conforming lot for the reduced frontage and has sufficient upland area, and the lot would, the new lot would be almost eighty-two acres, eighty-one point nine acres. And the rest of these plans represent basically breaking up the existing lots into some reduced frontage lots and some conventional lots. So I was told it was submitted today, I don't know if it was actually filed today, the A and R, and the reduced frontage application, but I was given plans for it, it wasn't submitted today. It will be submitted shortly therewith, being prepared by H S and T. And on the, one item that I know is gonna be addressed by, by calling this evening is gonna be the Midstate Trail, which does show up on the, which does show up on the H S and T A and R plans. They are providing, I believe it's a thirty-foot wide swath for the trail, as it, where it currently is. And I know another concern is the open space that was part of the flexible development, and basically the position that we're taking on that is that due to the scaling back of the overall project and that it's gonna be less overall lots, there's gonna be less development that happens on the property as a whole. And there're gonna be single-family houses that would be sold off, agricultural zoning and the size of the lots, expected to be single-family houses, and single-family houses typically develop around an acre or so. Much more than that, it's a lot of lawn to maintain, even if it were to be a bit more than that, the lots are, are bigger than that, but most people don't, when they build a house, don't develop five acres worth of lawn area. So we feel that by rescinding the subdivision, the lots that will result from the A and R and the reduced frontage lots would be overall less impactful, and even though there isn't the preserved open space that there would have been under the flexible development, we feel from a practical standpoint that a lot of space will be left open due to the nature of the development being scaled back. So that's my presentation.
So that's the intent, to just rescind the subdivision and break this all down into single-family lots and sell lots, is that?
Yes.
But the solar is still going to, the solar's not been developed yet, has it?
It's built.
It's built.
It's there.
Okay, okay.
So I'm just coming to join the discussion at the appropriate point.
Maybe if you could put the plans up so the audience could see it a little bit? We have ours up here, but I, I think the audience has some questions or wants to look at it.
Kurt, do you have a comment for us that you wanna make, because?
Well, I think, I.
Okay, can we just have, I just want Kurt to make his comment, too, because I, if, if.
So the first, the first thing is, is, and if I'm correct, we just saw these plans today.
Just came in, yes.
Okay, so right off the bat, I'm gonna recommend that you do a continuance on this.
Oh, of course.
Okay, there is a question about the large lot, when Bill and I quickly reviewed these lands, I'm sorry, Mr. Scanlon and I reviewed this, these plans, that the solar array is on, there's a huge, large, open space, it, it does not seem to have any access to anything, and, and the question is, is what is the intent to do with that land? If, if they are gonna farm it, that's fine, but I think they should, should state that intent. If they wanna continue down a path of donating it to someone, then it needs to be configured in a way that it would be useful and accessible to some preservation trust or something like that. So I don't know what that is. We did, you know, look at the A and R sketch, I'll call it, at this point, because it hasn't been formally submitted. There's fifteen lots on there, I think, as we counted them, William?
Well, some of them are already.
Some existing, but fifteen new lots as opposed to forty, fifty lots.
Thirty-one on the approved plan.
And, on the, so, the lots, you know, the number of homes is certainly, um, less. You are allowed one house on one lot in an A zone. They are proposing some reduced frontage lots. First glance at those reduced frontage lots, they meet all the technical requirements. They'd be required to come for a special permit after the A and R was signed, so we'll deal with them, um, when that happens. The, um, and this board has addressed the issue, the selectmen were addressing the issue last night of the sixty-one A, um, getting this property out of chapter. We've put, um, between the planning board and the assessors have put some processes in place, hopefully, to, uh, prevent the oops that occurred that got this solar field built before the, the, that area came out of sixty-one A. So I have to address the selectmen on that with the report the next time they meet because that came up last night because they were dealing with that. So, it's, it's a bunch of general comments, I think. You know, overall, it's unfortunate that the gentleman spent a lot of money developing a subdivision, but it's his business decision to, um, reconfigure his land as long as it complies with our zoning bylaws.
Frank, are there any lots, and the portion I read on the subdivision control law, are there any lots that are affected that have been sold or mortgaged?
No.
Out of this, this plan?
No.
So as far as you know, nobody will be, you know, legally affected by the rescission of this plan?
Correct.
And the solar field, does Mr. Gunter retain ownership of that land?
Yes, I believe, yeah, it's going to be a lease and he retains ownership of that.
And then just one big giant eighty-four acre lot?
Yes, and I believe, I believe he's actually going to change the legal entity that owns it because Gunter LLC, I believe, is a partnership with, um, his siblings. And I think he's going to buy his siblings out, so it wouldn't be Gunter LLC that would own it, but it would be Mr. Gunter through a different LLC.
Can, can we see, you, wait, the, that, I just.
Do we have it up here?
Do we have it up here?
Which plan?
Do we have the, the picture with it rescinded with the, the reconfiguration? The solar?
Oh, reconfiguring. That's what this is.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
This is the original plan that was planned when it was approved?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That was this. In the solar.
Great portion.
The part that's used on the solar is this.
So, what's happening is when this plan is rescinded, that solar lot will not conform to zoning because it won't have furniture on the road.
I don't think your mic is on, do you mind, arm the, sure.
So the, um, uh, the solar field, uh, was approved because it had furniture on a subdivision way. When the subdivision is rescinded, it won't have furniture, uh, to comply with zoning. So that's why the plan is being presented to create a new reduced furniture lot, which will have seventy-five feet of furniture and over five acres. Uh, so rescinding the plan, um, has the effect of making, uh, the solar field a non-conforming lot, uh, but it would conform once that special permit is approved.
So, but what's before us right now tonight is this?
It's just the rescission of the plan.
And in the meantime, the solar field is non-conforming?
It's, well, the plan has been submitted, I got it today, so there'll be a, a hearing before the planning board on that application.
So, do we have to rescind before we get the new plan? I, I.
Well, I think we, I, you know, I'd like to hear some comments from the audience because there was an issue with the open space that I think the board should hear first and fourth.
Hey, do you want to open it up to the, and get some, we can, we can have further discussion, but do we want to open it up to get some new ideas?
Yes.
Just please state your name and your address, um, for the record and, um. Hi, um, East Slidon on Zero Thirteen Boucher Drive. You mentioned, or the gentleman mentioned, lots affected by the rescinding of the plan. There are four homes already existing on the street that had, la, spring of two thousand seventeen, had thirteen trees taken down in our front yards to, um, widen the road as the road was supposed to be widened. There, the stumps are still there. One stump in my neighbor's yard is three feet tall. A couple of us have two telephone poles in our front yard now within fifteen feet of each other. And the big giant, uh, metal stake that is attached to, a couple of us also, they're just sticking out of the ground, they're not attached to the poles. They're just there. And I want to know what are, with, he said, those affected, lot, the lots that were affected by rescinding of the subdivision.
The trees that were taken down were big oak trees and big maple trees, beautiful trees that blocked up, blocked.
We lost all our shading.
That, that was, that was due to the solar and we had those issues at that time. The, the, um, poles that are there, are there wires on those poles or?
There are wires on both of them.
Not all of them, one of them has no pole, I mean, sorry, one of them has no wire. One of them has one wire, ours has one wire. But our, our service is underground still to the existing pole that we had when we moved in, when we built the house. I'm more concerned about the fact that we lost thirteen trees and we still have the stumps. We have to mow a lot around them, we have to mow around the, the stake for the pole. Especially my neighbor, her, one of her stumps, like I said, is three feet tall, it's massive, it's an eyesore for her front yard. She had a beautiful front garden there. It's gone.
So, I, I don't understand, were these trees on your property or were they on?
They were on the town property.
They were in the right of way.
Like the right of way, when they hit the, when they hit the white in the road, they had to knock, they had to cut all these down and the, and the, the, the idea is that, what, what are they, I don't, I'm not sure if it actually is kind of in line with what's being affected, but.
There was, there was actually work started on the subdivision that never finished.
Apparently.
And, and there's people that own property.
But there's no homes that were built on the subdivision.
Lots that were sold.
There were no lots that were sold, but there was still work.
No frontage was changed or anything like that. So yes, in preparation for the subdivision, Mr. Gunter was, um, uh, part of the subdivision required widening of the road and so that required moving utility poles. And that was all work that was done within the right of way.
But not completed?
Not completed, no. So there are poles that, um, that are there that don't have wires that, uh, should be taken down.
Should be taken down.
How about the stumps?
Uh, the stumps are in the right of way, so I would defer to the town on how they want to handle the stumps.
Would the town have taken the trees down if there wasn't, um, a subdivision going in?
The road had to be widened and that's why everything came down, was my understanding.
When I called the town, when they started cutting the trees down, I called the town, nobody even knew they were doing it.
I talked to the planning board, I talked to conservation because across the street is wetlands, which is why, if, if you look at this existing road, it's straight, it goes up a hill, but it's straight. Uh, when they were widening the road and they were doing the survey, all the stakes on the side of the road where there's no homes were very, very close to the road and the stakes on our property line were way in our lines. So, you'd go up and they would move around. And that was, I was told by conservationists because it was wetlands and they weren't allowed to do that. So I said, okay, that's fine, and we, our road does need to be widened. When, in the wintertime, you, two, you, there's some, there's snow piles, you can't buy. Non-wintertime, the two garbage trucks that go by, they always have to go on our lawn. There's not enough room for the garbage trucks to go by each other, I always have, um, tire tracks on my lawn. Who's responsible for the, for the?
Is this a town road or is this a private road? Is it public?
Public.
Okay, it's not a private one.
What's your draw? I need the public to say so that I can be heard.
So, as, as if you, well, not as if, if you looked at that plan that's in front of you, it would show this widening and, um, older roads often are not down the center of the right of way and that sounds to be the case here is what I would conjecture that, um, that layout was put in by a surveyor working for the developer. The road is way over here and these people had lots of grass and there were trees there that are in the town right of way. I think they have a valid concern that, that work be completed, at least those stumps removed. And I think maybe, and, and, but I don't know what power the planning board has to make them complete that or complete the utility pole construction.
The town or the?
Well, the planning board is the one that, um, required the road widening because of the in, increased traffic for the subdivision that this road accesses.
Right, but who's responsible for the stumps?
Is it the highway to?
Who caused the problem, the developer caused the problem?
Right, okay.
Okay, so, but I don't know, you know, um, this is one of those questions that Mr. Scanlon and I might have to research or maybe we can turn to the fine young lady over here who might have an answer. But she, I'm not forcing her to answer it all. But that was what's hap, was happening there. On the other road, I, and I get the names confused over there, but the road that the solar farm is, Horn Homestead is getting its power line from, um, we had a call from someone from National Grid wanting to know about, um, because Horn Homestead Road is a scenic road and what, what they can do with cutting and trimming of trees there. I reached back to that gentleman twice to, uh, to meet with him and have not heard from him. So, uh, the ball's in their court is what they may or may not want to do, but I would act as a conduit between the tree warden, uh, the planning board because it is a scenic road and any, uh, rights given to the utilities to maintain a, a safe power line. And, you know, it's something I'm going to learn about as, as time goes on. So, that's how these people ended up with holes in their yard.
Right.
Which really isn't their yard.
Right.
And trees cut down which aren't their trees because they are within the municipal right of way.
That's, the town didn't cut down the trees, the private company came in on behalf of the developer and removed the trees.
So we will.
But they, I would think they were public shade trees and there should have been a public hearing of before they were cut down.
Well, okay, so Horn Homestead Road is a scenic drive. I do not believe Busher, Busher Road is a.
But they're still town trees. So, it would still fall under the jurisdiction of the tree warden.
Right.
And he may, and so maybe a report.
And also as I.
He didn't know any of that. Wow. We did coordinate it with the tree warden before anything was stated down.
It was on public plan?
Did not. You did or did not?
We did coordinate with the tree warden.
You did.
It was a public notification, but we did coordinate with the tree warden.
So let's, let's also do more research into that and if we can, we'll add a condition into whatever we need to to make sure that, that it's in writing.
I think if we continue this, we would need that, uh, a report from the tree warden, um, at a minimum and.
So we expect.
Who, who do I email?
Wait, give us one sec, we, so we would expect the develop, we would expect, um, for you to do the research and figure out who's going to fix this because we would like it to be fixed before we, for the next meeting, please.
Who do I email my stump photos to?
Um, go to our website, um, and our page and email them to Jane Gruney, who is our administrative, who, who, who kind of handles all that kind of stuff for us and she'll make sure we all get the pictures. Okay. Um, so, we'll, so let's do the research and we'll, uh, we'll make sure it's taken care of in any way we can as the planning board before we.
And that goes to, is it Seth, the tree warden, Seth?
Oh, I think he is.
It is, yeah, Sacramento, we should probably get copies of that too.
Okay, okay.
What were you talking about with the shade ordinance thing?
Well, there's public shade tree law, which says that if you cut down a town tree, you need to have a public hearing.
Okay, yeah, because we lost quite a bit of shade.
Right, so if they were in the right of way, so any tree in the right of way is considered a town tree?
Right, so if you, if they.
That was done as part of the hearing, I believe, for the solar.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
No?
No.
Sorry.
So, I, we'll need to find out from the tree warden.
So they did it, they cut them down because of the, the development, but if they rescind a development, shouldn't they at least put some trees back to where?
And fix it so it looks, so that you don't have stumps in your front yard, so we'll.
And at least put a couple of trees there or something.
But, but those could be conditions of rescinding it.
Okay.
Well, actually, if I may, Zach James, twenty-three Busher Drive, as part of the solar change to that subdivision, Representative Gunter said that they would take care of those stumps that they had created. It has not been done. So, that was done as part of the previous development to add the solar, solar's been done, the stumps are still there. So, it was addressed in a previous meeting, but nothing has been resolved.
All right, so now it's going to be in our minutes and you're going to do the research for the next meeting. Please figure out how that problem can be solved, whoever needs, whoever has responsibility, come back to us with that information just so we can add that.
Is there a bond for that solar farm, is that something that would fall underneath the landscaping bond?
Uh, it was, probably was a bond, I don't know what the status of it is.
Yeah, let's, let's see if we can solve it this way and then we'll look into that when we need to.
Will there be another letter that gets sent out for the next?
Um, we'll continue, we'll, um, I'm sure we'll be continuing on this and we'll be able to agree on a date before we, before we continue, I.
We'll need to set a date.
So we will.
You won't get another letter, you'll have to come to the meeting or check the website for the time.
Okay, and it'll, but it'll say the, uh, the state of.
Right, and if you hang around, we'll, let us finish the discussion and then you'll, we'll, we'll give you a date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is, uh, John Walker from thirty-seven Colicum Jive. And, um, my son and I are in the middle of trying to purchase some property from, uh, Roy Gunter. It's the end of, uh, Busher Road, okay? So, the way we're looking at it is if you were to drive straight from Busher Road, we're trying to purchase the property right in front, the one to the right and the one to the left. So right now we have, um, three offers on that property that have been approved, uh, continued upon the town approving, you know, the lots. I've spoken to the electric company several times and they actually came out and met with me and we did address the idea of the poles are a mess. And they said, that's the first thing we're going to have to do, we're going to have to straighten out these poles so that, he says, I don't know who did this, but it's a, it's a real mess. So they are thinking about, um, you know, putting one pole all the way up and then from the last pole, I have to put up like four more poles leading to the property where we then will split the electricity and one will be for my son's house and one will be for my house. The rest of the land, we want to leave natural. So we want to have, you know, walking trails through there, we want to have, uh, you know, land for the grandchildren and things like that there.
The end of that street currently is defended by Busher Drive Electric, it's through that section of the woods back.
There is, uh, one house that was, they want the bond.
And you're talking about the one you're building after that?
I'm building after that, so.
So closer to where that's being fed from the other street?
Correct, right. But in order to, these are secondary lines that are coming up from, um, Morton Station.
Yeah.
So now in order to upgrade those, it would cost a lot more than for me to continue from Busher Drive straight up, rehook that house up and then continue on. And I think it's a better way too, you don't have all those poles going through the woods. And, uh, but it would be very expensive because all those poles are, some of them are ready to come down now. So that's, that's kind of what we've been working on and I've been working with, uh, Roy for a couple of months now and waiting for the meeting for at least those lots to be approved at the end of Busher Road. So regardless of, you know, the, uh, solar fields and things like that, unfortunately, I have nothing to do with that and I would like to see the, uh, lots rescinded for the end of Busher so that we can, you know, go on to the, uh, August eighth meeting, have them approved. So this way here, my son and I can, you know, start making plans. I've got a new grandson coming on, uh, November, uh, beginning of November and it would be great to start them in the building process.
Thank you.
To do that, would we have to rescind the subdivision plan first?
I, well, yes, I think you'd have to and then you'd have to act on the reduced furniture special permits.
So I don't think, maybe, I don't think we have time to do that for, to meet your, your timeframe.
Oh, really, okay, so we can just, uh, do the end of Busher Road, at least the three or four lots, depending on what we purchase?
Lot is time.
Okay, so it's all or nothing?
Yeah.
Well, no, we're going to, what's before us tonight is to rescind.
Correct.
And, um.
Just to rescind.
Just to rescind in total and then, and then after that's done, then we will get the.
Somebody will bring forward the lots, proposed lots.
Mm-hmm, right. Yeah, which I believe the maps are already with the town?
Submitted late this afternoon.
Oh, late this afternoon, okay.
So.
So we'll try to get it on the August eighth meeting.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. But as far as the, uh, the electric poles and everything, I am working with the, uh, National Grid so I can keep you posted on what I, I learned from it. Yep, but I've got a fellow that I, uh, I emailed him the plot plans. Yep, but I've got a fellow that I, uh, I emailed him the, uh, plot plans, uh, to the property, so he's aware of, you know, exactly where the property is and where I've gotta have the poles leading to the two separate lots. Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. I'll take you kindly.
Good evening, my name is Colin Novick, I'm with the Greater Worcester Land Trust. Um, we are here by the invitation of the Charlton Planning Board. Uh, when Mr. Gunther was looking to do an open space cluster subdivision, there needed to be a holder for the public open space and we were asked to step in and represent the public open space and the people of the town of Charlton and the residents and that is why I'm here today. Uh, Gunther Farm was a top open space priority in the open space and recreation plan for the town of Charlton. When the possibility existed of this chapter sixty-one A property becoming developed, uh, an effort ensued where the planning office tried to work with Mr. Gunther to come up with a way where a subdivision might be able to go in, but a significant amount of open space and public benefit could be had of it because it was so important to the town. Of the hundred and ninety-two acre site, a hundred and three acres were to be dedicated to open space under the open space cluster subdivision. Right now, our job is to advocate on behalf of the citizens of Charlton in their best interest with respect to open space. It pleases me that Mr. Roy Gunther has continued to express a verbal commitment to the preservation of the Midstate Trail. However, we are concerned about the fact that previously the Midstate Trail was protected by a hundred and three acres of open space and instead would be part of a thirty-foot ribbon. One of the premier open spaces in town is being lost, a chapter sixty-one A property. It came out of chapter sixty-one A quietly and calmly because it was becoming part of an open space cluster subdivision. At that time, if people had known that it was not going to be part of an open space cluster subdivision, it is not clear that the chapter sixty-one A process removal would have gone as well. The Midstate Trail is protected with significant buffers under the open space cluster. Uh, the creation of a public trailhead for public benefit was part of that plan. If the subdivision is rescinded, these public benefits disappear. Right now, I'm not sure how legally you can rescind because forty percent of the subdivision has already been built. Phase four and phase five have been built as, you can go out there, the solar farm is there. Phase one is currently underway. This, they doubled up telephone poles, they cut trees. This subdivision is underway, it is more than forty percent completed. So I'm not certain how you can get to this point, be this deep into the project and be able to rescind. At this particular point, the next steps for this project would be to issue an occupancy permit for the solar farm. That would go over to the building inspector. Two things need to happen for that occupancy permit. One, they need to create the road off of Boucher Road because right now, the solar farm is non-conforming and illegal. It does not have frontage. The frontage is a subdivision road. The second thing that would need to happen is all the open space, one hundred and three acres would need to be dedicated to the Greater Worcester Land Trust on behalf of the people of the town of Charlton. This is written into the approved minutes and decisions of the planning board. Those are the two next steps that are supposed to happen. Right now, we're being requested, um, we're requesting a continuance so that we can have discussions with the building inspector, the planner and the project proponent. We would like to see that the open space be retained. Under the plans which have been submitted late this afternoon, you will note that phase one and phase two contain no open space. There will be no dedicated open space. There will be a thirty-foot easement for the trail, that is true, that is good, however, this is a significant difference between what was proposed and what is already more than forty percent built and on the ground. I would like to once again point out, if you rescind this open space cluster subdivision, you are creating a non-conforming lot. You are creating something which is illegal because it was only able to be built based on the open space cluster. The lot lines that are being used for phase four and phase five, the frontage and the emergency access off of Horn Homestead were all contingent on different accommodations which were made to the neighbors and to the town in order to receive those benefits. To rescind it at this point means that they get the best of all of those accommodations made by the town without receiving any of the benefits. The town gets hosed. The last thing I would like to mention is this idea that was brought up by the project proponent that big fat lots are less development. They're not publicly accessible, they're gone. And whether or not there's developability in terms of wetland, over time with enough demand and enough money, all land is developable. The only thing that actually protects land is when it is actually permanently conserved either by the town or by a nonprofit on behalf of the town. All of those benefits are being lost. I would like to request a continuance, I would like to request that the building inspector and the planner, uh, have discussions with the project proponent, with the Greater Worcester Land Trust to figure out whether or not it's even legal to rescind this plan at this point because it has already been partially built. If you have any questions, I'd be loved to take them. But I'm, I'm a little bit passionate about this because the Greater Worcester Land Trust spent six years at the request of the Charlton Planning Board to get to this point. We are at the moment where the land is supposed to be transferred and all of a sudden, poof. So we, we got like tens of thousands of dollars of staff hours who just got flushed down the toilet with a proposal. So at this point, I would love to try to figure out where we can go next, how we can recover it. And I would also like to point out that if you did decide to rescind at some later point at some later meeting, you can rescind with a motion that contains an understanding because they're gonna be asking for special permits. And the special permits could include things like, we would expect that if you come to us with a special permit, it's going to include the open space that was originally accommodated in the plan you agreed to because it was part of the open space and recreation plan, it was part of chapter sixty-one A land, it was part of previous agreements. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. Chris Tinksting, eighty-eight Carroll Road, is this the same parcel that was taken on sixty-one A last night at the course looking meeting?
Yes, it's part of the same.
Okay.
Hard act to follow, but I, I will go back to the position, the, the idea of the flexible development is that you get, um, what the developer gets out of that is more units and what the town gets out of that is open space. So what the developer is giving up is the more units. So it's not a one-for-one trade-off, you know, as, as Colin was making it sound, um, the developer is giving something up here as far as the amount of units that will be developed on the total property. Um, if he had future site and knew how the economy was gonna go and the cost of roads, he never would've done the subdivision to begin with. He would've just created the special permit for the solar lot cause it, he would've been able to do it and everything would've happened by right. So the fact that the subdivision didn't go because of economics is unfortunate, um, but again, the benefits in, that received from the flexible development are no longer being received, um, with it being rescinded. So if we were still getting forty units, I would think we would still give, or whatever the total lots were, I would think that, you know, the open space donation would still be on the table, but we're not getting the benefit of the flexible development as far as the number of units.
What's happening to the hundred and three acres?
Well, part of it's going to the solar site and it's being broken out among the other lots.
The solar site was built entirely within the confines of what was supposed to be developed under phase four and phase five. The remainder of the lots of phase four and phase five are still open and available and could be dedicated to open space. At this point, there's no commitment though, so we have no idea what becomes of them. Um, I will also say that I'm not sure that you could have developed the solar farm where you did, when you did, without the open space cluster because of the fact that there was a great deal of concern about the scenic byway, which was Horn Homestead and the neighbors and the access and the length of cul-de-sac without actually doing it. So whether or not they're, you know, getting nothing out of it. No, they got a solar farm in a place that you couldn't have done it with an access, you couldn't have done it without having done the open space cluster. They did get a lot out of it.
Thank you. Maybe we could, um, think, we'll, we'll discuss more and get some, the legalities, but.
I would suggest we might want town council to help us with this question.
And maybe there's a, maybe there's like, uh, like some sort of precedence to do a percentage of the open space within percentage of lots or something like that, but that's something for, to, to think about.
Yeah, I mean, there's a few things that, that I think we need to look into for this to.
I think we should.
If I may, just add to the, um, Mr. Novick's comments as far as phase four and phase five, the flexible development was modified to combine phases four and five specifically for the solar and there was a public hearing on that, of that modification. So that was already visited as far as phase four and phase five being consolidated into one, one development, I guess, and those, uh, lots being consolidated to provide for the solar lot.
Okay.
Cindy Rogers, fifty-four, Richardson's Corner Road. Uh, we're on the east side of the solar field and it was supposed to be the open space tree area left between the solar field and our homes. If it's going to be available for someone to, you know, clear the land, if it's gonna be sold, then we would have a concern because right now we don't see the solar field potentially if the land is, uh, cleared, we may now see it. So again, we approve the solar field based on trees being left between our homes and the solar fields. I think that would need to be addressed, uh, at least have some open space between Richardson's Corner and the solar field.
Okay, thank you.
Did you take that note, Bill? Did you take that note? Is that what you?
Yes.
Hi, Zach James, twenty-three Boucher Drive. Um, just wanna touch on, yes, the, the solar farm was one piece, just, that's a concern for mine. Um, I didn't hear anything guaranteeing that the lots would be left available, that's just a expectation, so nothing in writing on that.
Say that again?
The lots that would be larger to have more open space, again, there's nothing guaranteeing that open space, it's been touched on pretty good, so I'm pretty much.
Well, just to answer that point, when you get a reduced lot furnished special permit, there's requirement that the lots cannot be further subdivided. So if they create a ten acre lot with the special permit, you cannot further divide that lot.
And it's written, written on the plan itself, so.
So, but they're still remaining in private ownership.
Is that public accessible?
No, privately owned.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the loss of the trees that we have on the street, uh, outside of the loss of shade, outside of the loss are the, the issues of the stumps. Uh, I think that, uh, I've been on the street for a little over three years now, um, we've seen a deterioration of the road significantly, uh, especially over the last twelve months. Um, what started with a single culvert at the bottom of the street on one side, we now have three culverts and safety cones for the last months. Uh, this is because.
Six months.
What?
What, last six months?
Six months, yeah. So it's continuing to get bad and worse and this is where we have our kids picked up and dropped off on the school buses, playing next to a culvert that is continually adding a new culvert just because the hole is getting bigger. All right?
So is this a highway department issue?
It is, with the, and it's been kind of pushed off because the expectation is, we're doing that road soon.
Right.
That's not the case at this point. So, yes, we have heard people saying that we want a, a plan for more of the telephone poles and cleaning up the stumps. Something has to be done about that road as well. Uh, we've had tons of washout, uh, obviously all over town, but simply putting in culverts and, and drain storm grades over holes is not a solution when you can't even have buses go up that road because it's so small, so every kid is now at that location.
Okay.
Um, and I already mentioned earlier that, uh, in a previous, uh, board for the approval of the solar, that a government representative did say that they would take care of those stumps, so.
Right.
So, thank you for that.
Continue.
So, um, do I have a motion to?
Make a motion that we continue this public hearing to a time that's suitable for everybody.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
I.
Now let's get a date so the audience will.
So, here's what we have.
How far do you need this pu- pushed out? Do you need any specific?
No, I think, uh, it was just conversations at this point.
I think the next, the next meeting, you know, the applicant is in a, a rush to get this rescinded if possible, so.
Yeah, we need to move it as, as quick as we can.
Can we get the information that we need by, by the eighth? I mean, we need to, to speak with the tree warden, we need to speak with the, the DPDW, we need to speak with the lawyer, we need to.
Right, I, there's a lot going on here. Do you think you can get all the questions answered that were thrown at you tonight?
Right, the big piece is the conflict.
For my end, I think I can, but I don't know as far as, how much time you guys need as far as town council and whatnot goes.
But we preserve stuff is really.
I would ask that we get put on for the eighth and if, if there isn't information or all the information isn't available, then we continue at that point, but if we have the information, I'd like to have that scheduled to have that option.
Ooh, shoot, eighth, I'm not gonna be here.
What did you say you had on August eighth already?
Didn't we have Valley Green Grove?
No, that's the fifth, not, uh, September fifth.
That's September fifth.
Oh.
Um, we have, uh.
It seems like more and more is getting penciled in.
We have about five or six public hearings, continuations.
Okay, then what's the next meeting after the eighth?
The September fifth, which is, we don't wanna do it then.
And we can't do it then? Um, I'm terribly sorry, but it's gonna have to get pushed out. We're, we're not gonna do what we've been doing in the past and that's jamming ourselves up.
Yeah, and we're, we're not staying here till eleven o'clock anymore because we don't.
We don't function well.
We don't function well.
That late. Um, and we apologize to, um, the people who this effect and everything, but this is something that requires a lot of legal looking at and seeing exactly what needs to be done and I feel we need to take the time to get it right.
Who has the list of concerns that you guys?
We've, you're, we're on tape.
We're on, we're on video.
We're on tape.
We'll have minutes.
We're on voice tape, we're on video, yes, we have it all. Um, I just suggest that.
So September?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. How do we do, put something on there? No, I'm sorry, but we can, only do what we can do.
So we have the fifth.
Do you wanna just go line?
Okay, on the nineteenth.
We actually, we actually had.
At the nineteenth, we have the Hammond Hill coming back.
So that would be the reduced furnished. Okay.
So we'll see that first?
Um, no, that's, that's a separate application, that's the special permits.
Oh, but what if, what's wrong? Is it, can they do that without the reduced furnished?
No, no, they can't.
All right, so we have a little bit of an issue.
Okay.
We have, on September fifth, we have scheduled the reduced.
So we're starting that, uh, well, we would start that on the August eighth. Don't forget that here. But this is just a draft, we can schedule that at a different time.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure we're in the right order.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, we can't approve the, reduced furnished lots and.
With something else open.
Right, without.
Correct.
Sure.
We need to rescind the plan before we can act on the special permits.
Yep.
Okay.
Let us go from there.
So, we'll schedule those, reduced furnished lots for September nineteenth as well?
Yep, yep, doing well together since we'll have all that information.
Be fresh in our minds, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to just move to the public?
Yep.
You're all set. September 19th.
It's my fault, permission.
Maybe we just stop making everybody just so happy and pushing ourselves, let's just push it out.
Okay, so we had this one on September 19th, too. I mean, you know, I'm terribly sorry, but we can't, we can only accommodate so much. We get into enough trouble without trying.
So, what's next?
This is the marijuana. So, being way past the eight o'clock timeframe, pursuant to MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 18, 2018, at 8:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass, on the petition of 200 or more registered voters of the town to amend the Charlton zoning bylaw by rescinding the vote of the 2018 annual town meeting to adopt Article 27 on the warrant, zoning bylaw amendments for marijuana establishments. The complete text of the proposal is available at the Planning Board office and Town Clerk's office for public inspection during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the zoning proposal should appear at the time and place designated. I am going to read the petition. Petitioners hereby...
Yes.
Petitioner? Petitioner hereby requests the Charlton Board of Selectmen to call a special town meeting to consider the following article, to see if the town of Charlton will vote to rescind the adoption of Article 27 of the Town of Charlton 2018 Annual Town Meeting warrant or take any other action thereon. The purpose of this article is to give voters a say in the mega marijuana facilities coming to Charlton and in their siting. Do we...
We keep, so, would you like to introduce?
Okay, all the petitioners.
So, we invited town council here, Catherine Laffman, or Laffman, from Copelman and Page, who was quite knowledgeable on the issues of marijuana regulation in the state, to give an overview of the state law and the local bylaw that's been adopted and to answer any of the legal questions that folks might have.
Okay. Good evening, my pleasure to be here. Can everyone hear me? All right, is that better? Okay. So, just going to provide a basic overview of sort of how we got to this place and what the role of municipalities is with respect to this new marijuana industry that's coming to Massachusetts. So, as you're probably all mostly aware, ballot question four in November of 2016 legalized adult use marijuana in Massachusetts. Now, there were substantial legislative amendments to that ballot initiative petition, which happened in July of 2017, and ultimately there was formed on the state level a Cannabis Control Commission, which came into being on September 17th, or September of 2017, and they were charged with the, with putting in place a regulatory scheme for adult use marijuana in Massachusetts. Now, the ballot question that was passed and the subsequent legislation that came after that resulted in sort of two different things that happened. Number one, there's this legalization of adult use marijuana for personal use, and there are a number of provisions of state law that govern how personal use should happen. But the bigger issue and what is really affecting most municipalities is this question of how to regulate the commercial side of what is now a legalized substance and a legalized industry. So, the Cannabis Control Commission is the state licensing body that's charged with putting in place the regulations and making sure that any commercial establishment that is engaged in the marijuana industry within Massachusetts receives a state license. There's also a municipal role in the legislation that got enacted with respect to how the commercial side is going to be rolled out in Massachusetts. And what the law gives municipalities is the authority to control the siting of establishments within their own, within their own community. And now, the thing that's complicated about marijuana zoning and regulation on the local level is that it doesn't follow the way every community in Massachusetts treats other types of land uses. In Massachusetts, most communities have what is known as prohibitory zoning, which says if a specific use is not enumerated in your zoning bylaw, that use is deemed prohibited. However, when they enacted the marijuana legislation, they created a land use category that instead of being an opt-in, became an opt-out land use, which basically means that unless a community takes proactive measure to prohibit the use within their community, it's going to be deemed allowed. And that put a big burden on many municipalities with respect to going through the planning process and determining how is a community they wanted to regulate and cite and have this type of substance, the commercial side of this industry, take place in their communities. So, if you're a community that wants to prohibit it entirely, there's a, there's a process that has to be followed to opt-out. That process involves both enacting a bylaw that bans one or more types of commercial establishments, and if you're a community that voted yes on question four, there's a second step that has to be followed, and that is a special election or an annual election by a ballot question, in which it's basically a referendum and it, it has the voters vote on the specific language of that bylaw to ban or opt-out. Municipalities who are not seeking to ban or opt-out of the commercial industry then have the ability to sort of follow one of two paths. They can either put in place regulatory zoning that specifically calls out marijuana establishments as uses, so you basically break it out into your retail use, your cultivation use, or even your processing use, and you determine where within the community those specific uses will be allowed, which is essentially what the town did at the special town meeting in May, or sorry, at the annual town meeting in May. It created these land use classifications for marijuana establishments and determined where they should go and made them subject to special permitting requirements and some special regulations. However, because this is, this is basically an opt-out provision, if a community has not put in place regulatory zoning specific to these marijuana uses, then the uses are still deemed allowed, and they are allowed under your existing zoning classification. So, for example, if someone's coming in and wants to do a retail facility in a community that hasn't specifically designated marijuana retail as a use, then you're going to have to look to your zoning bylaw and determine where your retail uses, your general retail uses are allowed, and marijuana would be considered a class of retail use. So, the issue I know that is before the town with respect to the special town meeting is the question of rescinding the regulatory zoning. If that regulatory zoning is rescinded, it doesn't mean that marijuana is prohibited or banned within the town. It simply means you're going to revert to your existing land use classifications, and those uses will still be allowed in the absence of the proactive step of enacting a bylaw and taking a ballot vote, those uses will be allowed under existing land use classifications. So, that's your sort of whirlwind summary of where we stand right now with respect to regulatory zoning within the town.
And that sounded so easy.
So, under our existing zoning bylaws, where would marijuana be allowed to go if this, if our zoning regulation was rescinded, if it was voted to rescind, let's say we took away the, what's currently in place, where would it be allowed to go?
So, it's going to be, then it's going to become a use-specific analysis, and it's going to go basically to the building commissioner for those determinations. But presumably, the cultivation-type uses would go under the agricultural classification. Retail would go where retail would be allowed, manufacturing, sort of where you allow manufacturing. Now, the agricultural issue, I know that this is, this is an issue that has a lot of confusion across the state, and I will do my best to sort of try and explain how this has played out. When marijuana was legalized pursuant to ballot question four, the legislature took an immediate quick fix in December of 2017, or sorry, 16, and they looked at the existing, there's a zoning exemption in Chapter 40A, Section 3, which applies to agricultural uses, and it basically provides that depending on a couple of factors, if you have a property that is in agricultural use that's on either two or five acres or more, it's exempt from zoning with respect to those agricultural uses. And what the legislature did is it put in place an amendment to 40A, Section 3, that provided that marijuana is not an agricultural use for the purpose of the 48-3 agricultural use exemption. Now, the confusion that comes into this and which is, has played out in a number of communities, is the fact that that agricultural use exemption is a state exemption. It's not something that's enacted in your local zoning, it's something that's applied on the state level, and it precludes municipalities from putting in place zoning that would restrict agricultural classification. Many communities have what is known as more permissive agricultural zoning. And in the communities that have called agricultural uses out specifically within their bylaw, and if those, if those agricultural use classifications and regulations are not an exact mirror of the, of the 40A, Section 3 exemptions, such that they could be claimed to just be implementing that, then that agricultural zoning is in fact a more permissive zoning that comes into play within your community with respect to those agricultural uses. In that instance, agricultural zoning is most likely going to be the use classification in your zoning bylaw that most closely resembles agricultural marijuana cultivation. And unless you have specifically defined agriculture within your zoning bylaw as excluding marijuana, and you have no other marijuana-specific zoning in place to designate it elsewhere, you're going to have to find, excuse me, find a use classification that fits agricultural, that fits marijuana cultivation, and agricultural zoning in your bylaw could provide such a use classification.
You want to open up yet?
Let's, let's just, let's just... A legal question for the actual August 1 meeting. The petition that was put forward, can that be amended on the, on the floor? And let's just talk specific. This, if this needed, instead of just kind of rescinding, could it, could this particular motion be, be modified in any way?
So, the amendment that's been proposed is basically a full rescission of the zoning that was put in place in May. In order for there to be an amendment to that article, it would have to be determined to be within the scope of what was proposed, and that's really a question for the moderator on the floor of town meeting. Scope issues are definitely tricky areas to navigate, and if an article is ultimately amended beyond the scope, it puts it at risk for disapproval by the Attorney General. And the scope, in my opinion, of this zoning article is very narrow. It's a complete rescission. And so, something other than that, something less than that, there really is an open question as to whether or not that would exceed the scope.
Even though that it's less and not more?
It's a question of what is, what has been noticed and, and whether or not people have had the opportunity to be on notice of what that changes and to be, have it fully vetted at the Planning Board. So, if it's not a full rescission, but it changes the zoning substantially from what it was before without the benefit of that public hearing and sort of an analysis of what the impacts of that would be, then, then it raises a scope issue in my opinion.
Even if we're discussing that tonight, that particular, the, the, the big issue here right now is that we, we already have two in process, and what, when we, when we put forth this on the floor, and we can all agree, what we thought we were doing is that we were limiting the total amount of facilities in this town based on the minimum requirement. We thought we were saying, all right, fine, put them in, put them in agricultural, you need this much space, et cetera, et cetera, but we want the overall limit of what we put to be, the original number was three because we thought the calculation was three. So, the big, and I, and I get what the petitioners are trying to do. We did that, whatever the reasons were, we, we, when we voted to approve it, we, in our minds, all of us, and you can read it in minutes and videos and everything else, we absolutely believed that we were allowing the minimum required, the minimum required facilities. When it went to town floor, when people voted on it, they believed they were voting on that, too. I mean, there's been, I've talked to hundreds of people in this town, unfortunately, I'm everywhere, so I, so, and that's what the town believed they were voting on. The surprise was that it's unlimited. So, that's, that's in the whole heart of it all. That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking this specific question, and hopefully everybody understands what I'm, what I'm trying to get for here. So, that's, that's the, the big issue.
So, the question is, could we modify it to remove...
And could we modify it at this public hearing and be able to put forward something like...
I've looked into that, too, because I thought that would be a good idea to do, but I don't believe we can do that. Let's...
There are substantial scope concerns with respect to an article that's been brought forward by citizen petition to do a complete rescission, and then to go in and surgically change one section instead of a complete rescission raises issues of whether or not that is really what was being petitioned.
Even if petitions, petitioners are here?
All 300 of them?
Right.
Maybe, can I, through the chair?
Yes, please.
Maybe look at it from a different point of view. I think one of the biggest concerns that we have about this zoning is the sheer size of a facility that could go in. Right now, a Tier 11 license is limited to 100,000 square feet. And within our bylaws, we have a special permitting that could allow co-location. It's, my understanding that it's the board's discretion to look at that co-location and see if it's feasible, permissible, acceptable in a neighborhood, and we could deny co-location. Could we also deny sizes of, of facilities that come in, or is it all determined on that, on that licensing?
So, I think we sort of, there's two issues here because you do have this Valley Green Grow applicant that is not currently subject to the current zoning as a result of the subdivision, the preliminary subdivision plan that was filed. So, so what you can do under a site plan with respect to the size of a proposed facility that's exempt from the zoning is a little bit different than what you could perhaps do and condition and regulate with respect to a special permit, which gives you more discretionary authority than you have in a site plan context. But certainly, issues of scope and impact are within the Planning Board's purview.
The Valley Green Grow is grandfathered?
They are subject to a zoning freeze under 40A, Section 6, so it's not technically a grandfathering, it's, it's basically, it's a freeze. They're, they're able to operate under the existing zoning, provided that they meet these sort of subdivision benchmarks.
So, the old zoning before the, before the, the new bylaw was, was put to town?
That's correct. So, April 1st was when these commercial establishments became sort of a lawful use within Massachusetts. And prior to the town adopting zoning on April 25th, the preliminary subdivision plan was filed, which froze the zoning as it existed at that time with respect to that applicant. But any applicant that comes in subsequent is governed by what you've put in place in terms of the existing zoning, unless it's rescinded on August 1st.
And, and if it is rescinded on August 1st, it wouldn't have no effect on Valley Green Grow?
That's correct.
And then, then everybody could do what Valley Green Grow did?
Technically.
And if it is rescinded, then they wouldn't need special permit to come in because they'd be a byright of the zone?
Right, and this, and the site plan review that Valley Green Grow is subject to was part of an agreement with the Board of Selectmen, it's part of their host community agreement. So, if it's a byright use and has no site plan approval required under the bylaw, they could come in by right.
So, basically, if this citizen's petition goes through, we've lost a lot of control over all the incoming projects.
You revert to the, to the existing zoning, and so you don't have the marijuana-specific uses and the, and the designation, the areas that they've been designated in, the special review criteria, the special permitting criteria, that all goes away, and you just revert to how they would be treated under existing use classification.
And under the agreement with Valley Green Grow, we can kind of do our site plan even because that's part of the agreement, even though if that wasn't in agreement, we, we would have a lot less control. So, at this point, we're... We're in the best situation, yeah. But at least it allows us to...
Have some control.
Have, have some control over protecting the neighborhood. Another specific question was, in the new, in the, in the one that was passed, there's that, the little sentence that says that we have the authority, that they, it's, it's the 100,000 square feet of growth, but then we have the authority to let them put it all together. What control do we have? What control do we have over the size under what we, what we're currently doing now when they?
Under what, our, under what the, the host agreement says?
And that's, so if, if we're looking at this plan and they're 100 feet from a house, because that's what the setback is, 100 feet, and they have to have all this lighting because the security is beyond, you know, there's, there's so much. Is there going to be people that are sitting on their deck and are, are, and within 100 feet there seeing all these lights everywhere? And, and how much control do we have over, I, I, I mean, can I say I want an 80-foot? I'm being sarcastic, but what can I do to protect that? Because 100-foot setback is absolutely, I mean, for, I mean, let's all be, be honest that this is a manufacturing facility and, I mean, like, they're going to be doing manufacturing, the cultivating, but manufacturing, they're going to be putting, they're going to be picking and, there's going to be people 100 feet away. I don't, I mean, I look at, I don't even have a neighbor 100 feet away. So, is there anything that we, we, we can do to, I, I mean, we were all elected by our neighbors and we, we, we want to make sure that we're protecting them from a, a neighborhood with an orchard to a gigantic facility that's going to have tons of lighting, tons of security. They're going to have lots of fans, lots of electricity going on and lots of motors happening. I mean, how much control do we have saying, I want it 1,000 feet away? I, I'm, it seems, I mean, having a solar farm is one thing because they're, you don't hear them, but, and they're not really lit. So, that's my big concern with how we.
What's our power?
Yeah. So, site plan review authority is not a discretionary authority with respect to whether you can approve or deny. If they meet the zoning requirement, you have to approve. What the planning board's power is under site plan is basically to condition. And you have site plan review criteria, and you look at that criteria, and you look at the impact, and you are able to impose conditions on the use such that it meets, or brings the use into conformance with those site plan review criteria and mitigates the impacts. That's, that's the purpose of site plan review. If you impose conditions that are so onerous that an applicant claims they cannot operate and it's tantamount to a denial, they will likely appeal those conditions and then, you know, you have a, the court has to determine whether or not those conditions were reasonable. So, the, the planning board's power under site plan really is the power to condition. And it, and the conditions have to be in accordance with the, the site plan review criteria that are established in the bylaw.
And those conditions, as long as a reasonable person thought that 10,000 feet setback versus 1,000 feet setback, those kind of things. Like, you just can't be out of control to, to, to try to stop the project. You can, but you can, again, reasonable considerations.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you. And one more question, just so, because it will set the tone. The second item for the, for town meeting is to ban all recreational, am I correct? Recreational use, gross, growth, anything that's going to result in.
Anything other than medical, retail.
Anything, only, only medical.
So, it's basically all of your medical, commercial use establishments?
So, if you, if you grow it, you only can sell it for medical reasons and that kind of. So, does that actually stop current applicants? Does that, does that, or are they still grandfathered in, under, if, if, if such a change happens?
So, with respect to the Valley Green Grow project, as we just discussed, it is under a zoning freeze. It is a general bylaw, but they are, they would be still subject to the zoning that existed. And the zoning would have allowed for that use. Now, the question of whether or not a ban can be appropriately adopted through a general bylaw or is any zoning bylaw is an, an issue that many communities have faced. And, and that is somewhat of an unresolved issue right now. The attorney general has approved general bylaws that impose bans, but done so with the caution and the caveat that a regulatory ban on a use of land is perhaps a more appropriate subject of zoning and should perhaps be adopted as a zoning bylaw. And in a case where the, a community has done a regulatory zoning and then it rescinds it and then adopts a general bylaw, that, that creates sort of a chain of, of this question of, is this really an appropriate way to, to accomplish what you're trying to do? And is the attorney general going to look at the regulatory zoning and approve a general bylaw ban? Or could an applicant challenge it as, as not a reasonable way to go about restricting? So, these are open questions in many, many communities as to how you, you go about implementing a ban. Obviously, a zoning bylaw ban is a higher quantum of vote. You're going to have to get two-thirds. You still have to do the ballot question. That is just a majority. It's not a two-thirds. But, you know, certainly if you pass a general bylaw ban and then you are able to pass it with the ballot vote, you can, you can make an argument that an effective ban has been implemented.
Because we, because, I mean, I've been reading and reading, and every town seems to be doing something a little bit different. And it's, so, it's just kind of unsettled.
It is an unsettled area, and I suspect at some point, there will be a, a case in which the courts have to make this determination.
Thank you.
And the planning board cannot, on, on the second article, we have nothing to do with that.
So, the planning board's public hearing tonight is really on the zoning bylaw change, which is the rescission. The planning board does not issue a recommendation to town meeting on a general bylaw change, and that's not the subject of the hearing tonight.
Thank you. Are we, do we have any more questions before I open it?
Yes, since we have an expert here. So, when the state adopted their, the regulations for the CCC, the co-location, was that intended to collate tier 11 companies together in one building? Or is it more designed to collocate, collocate smaller tier independent growers to, to better save on capital expenses and things like that? I, I just have a concern with 10 tier 11 licenses coming in under one building. I don't think that was ever the intention of, certainly not this board, in their forethought or their, their size, but certainly not that this, the state would, would even allow that. I'd be surprised.
So, there's, there's nothing currently in the regulations that expressly precludes that from happening. Part of the intent of the, the co-location, or sorry, the, the canopy cap was to, to make sure that monopolies didn't occur such that really what happens under the cultivation canopy is that if you're a controlling person, as you, if you meet the definition of, of a controlling person under the regulations, you cannot have control, personal control over more than 100,000 square feet of canopy. That way, you can't have one commercial entity come in and buy up all the canopy and, and operate a monopoly or a price control on that. So, that was largely the intent of, of imposing a canopy cap. And then also, they have a seat-to-sale tracking system such that they want to, to make sure that, and within that canopy cap, that a, a reasonable percentage of that product is actually making it.
70 to 85 percent sure.
Is making it to market. And if you're not able to, to find retailers for that product, then you're subject to a, to a reduction. So, it allows them to, to track product more easily and, and keep a, a greater control on who's controlling product and, and make it such that the industry is open to, to more participants. And, and that's largely the reason for the canopy control.
So, what would prevent 10 separate LLCs from coming in that are owned by one corporation or, or?
Well, because it's not based on, on the name of the company that controls it, it's based on the definition of a controlling person. So, if you have a controlling interest in, in multiple LLCs or corporations, then you still have, you're still subject to that same canopy cap.
Does this board have the authority to, to limit the number of, of colocate, colocating companies in, in one facility? Or, or the, the ability to limit, I guess, each license to a separate facility?
Currently, that's not a provision in the zoning bylaw that allows you to, to do that. I mean, we've talked about the, what sort of your site plan review authority is, but if, if you wanted a limitation on, you know, for example, some communities have put in place a requirement that a, an establishment has to be in a standalone facility. Or that no two establishments shall be more than 500 feet, you know, they must be at least 500 to 1,000 feet separate so you don't end up with a cluster. So, there are ways to address those sorts of things under zoning, and, and that's not currently built in to this zoning. So, your ability to impose those types of limitations under site plan conditioning really sort of is dependent on the scope of your site plan review criteria and whether or not that is a reasonable control to impose on, on this applicant.
You said the April 1st date. What was that date for?
That was really the date when, when the CCC was scheduled to start accepting license applications for commercial use ventures. Now, it, it rolled out gradually, sort of over a period with respect to those license applications. But that was really the date that municipalities were looking to, to sort of establish the beginning of the commercial industry and when zoning needed to be in place.
So, we should have had our zoning in by then?
If zoning had been in place, if somebody had filed a subdivision plan prior to that to freeze zoning, it, it was not marijuana, it's not currently a, a use that was authorized. So, it would have been a more difficult argument to make that somehow the marijuana use was a use that was protected under a zoning freeze.
And during that time, we were fighting for our planner salaries. So, that was our focus and it wasn't, this wasn't our focus.
It was, it was also a very difficult timeline rollout for municipalities because everybody had an annual town meeting scheduled and it didn't necessarily line up with that April 1st deadline. And, and unless you were going to hold a special town meeting in advance of that, and, and some municipalities did, but many did not, so.
Well, we thought we were ahead of the game with the limiting our total to the, to the minimum allowed. So, we were kind, we, we, I guess we're proactive in the wrong way. So, are we good? Can I open this up?
Sure.
So, I'm going to open this up. Please, limit to subject matter and keep it, just because it's past 10:00 and we all have to go to work tomorrow. If you could, welcome to come on up.
And we're only discussing the rescinding of the.
Just the rescinding piece, please.
This is only about Article 1 on the special town meeting. That's the only thing we're going to be talking about. Okay. Nobody wants to?
Gentlemen, no. Good evening. My name is Roger Clutier. I live in 17 Coburn Road. I guess my question is, since we passed the bylaws that basically allows as many grow houses as they want to put in because there is no limit, that's the big thing. I mean, it's a limit of two retail and two medical, but unlimited others. If this is passed, you said we lose control. We don't have any control now, do we? I mean, if they can put as many as they want, as big as they want, 3 million square feet, I, I'd have done, but, but you follow what I'm saying is, is what have we got to lose since it sounds like we've already lost?
So, the original, the, the original zoning states in agricultural, and correct me, it's five acres and you could put up a greenhouse and you could grow it in your backyard. So, the, even though this is not a good, what we passed was not good, it wasn't what we intended, but we, that, it is, it is what it is, right? At this point, it, it's better than having everybody's neighbor in agricultural zone pop up a, a, get, I mean, I guess they would need to get approval by the selectmen, so it would be under their control. They could go with a five-acre lot and say, I want to build a greenhouse and I want to grow marijuana on my property. And if, with their support and obviously a license from the state, they could go anywhere under the, under our current, under our previous zoning.
And this board would have no say and they wouldn't have to come in front of us.
Exactly.
Doesn't sound like you have a lot of say now. That's all I'm saying is it sounds like we've lost control.
But at least, at least, at least now, until we get to the next town meeting and it gets fixed, at least now, we can, we can sit in front, we, we had the special permit. So, we could modify setbacks, we could modify lighting, we could, we could, you know, they have to wait to get in front of the board. We, we could, we would have more, we would have a little bit of control versus none. Not perfect, but.
But isn't that what you had before we even voted on that? I mean, it always had to go before the planning board.
It's going to, it's going to re, it's, no, not on a byright. So, it would be byright if you have five acres, you would be able to build, construct a greenhouse. You'd have to obviously get the selectmen's approval to, to be able to do it. And it's, again, their discretion. And then potentially, and almost everybody in Charlton has five acres and 86% of us do live in an agricultural zone. I could put one up on, on my property. We all, because we all have that, that's what the worry is. Our, our intention was different, but, but it is what it is. We're here now.
Yeah.
And this discussion is whether us as a board would support it. And we're looking, we're looking for the input to see where we want to go with this.
And the special town meeting doesn't give you any latitude to put any other articles in there?
Unfortunately, unfortunately.
Because it's a citizen's petition.
Because it's a citizen's petition, it's only that article.
You've got 300 plus signatures that want this.
I know you can't alter the article. She's already into that. I didn't know if she could have.
She, she didn't say we couldn't alter it. We, we.
Well, you could substantially change it.
Right, we can substantially change it. And if we did, it would be at the discretion of the AG's review, correct? So, if it was.
Isn't it always at the AG's?
Is that what would?
Well, I mean, it, it's the moderator's call initially, and then it's reviewed by the AG.
So, so our moderator would have to decide if a motion could be made to say, no agricultural, only an industrial. So, if that was, we want to, we want to rescind the, you know, whatever, you could.
Thank you. Hello, Kristen Castigan, 88 Carroll Hill Road. I wanted to just clarify a couple of points. The attorney specified that if we rescinded, then the, it would be up to Mr. Meskis, the zoning enforcement official, to find a similar use in the code that we would fall back upon that these business uses would be similar to. So, in the case of cultivation, there's actually been two conflicting interpretations in a very short timeframe this year. The first interpretation was from early 2017 through April of 2018. Charlton didn't need any zoning since marijuana is not agricultural per zoning state law. And this was clearly stated to the Marijuana Advisory Committee in February and then again to the Planning Board on March 14th. That all of a sudden changed about a month before our, our annual town meeting, and all of a sudden marijuana is agriculture because it grows indoors in a greenhouse. I would like to know, are there any other greenhouses in Charlton that require a power plant to operate onsite? Any other? Does anybody know of any of those?
Mine? Generators in case we lose power?
In case, required to operate at all times. Okay. That's first. Second of all, I'd like to know are there any manufacturing uses allowed in any agricultural districts in Charlton currently?
That would be a question. Do you? Is that a question to the zoning or is that a question?
If you have a specific question about a specific property, I will conjecture an advisory opinion.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'd like to point out that over 83% of the town is agricultural zoned, when in fact, really more than half of that is used in a residential manner. And less than 7% of that zone is actually used for farming. So, it is terribly out of date. So, for us to be punished and allow cultivation in 83% of the town because our map is out of date? How did we get here? And then third, I'd like to point out that if you were to rescind the general bylaw and back putting in a, rescind the zoning and back putting in a general bylaw, that would halt all of this, give you time to craft a new and improved bylaw for the fall town meeting, which we could all then have hearings upon and understand and build something that actually works for Charlton?
Is that a true, true statement? What she just said?
which we could all then have hearings upon and understand and build something that actually works for Charlton?
Is that a true statement? What she just said?
It did.
Would you repeat that again?
I said if, if we were to rescind the zoning bylaw, Article Twenty-seven, that was just passed a town meeting, which was completely misunderstood, I believe, by a lot of people. And then we were to actually pass the general bylaw, which only requires a simple majority, we would then require an election with the same question also to actually opt out. But what I'm trying to say is it would at least slow things down and give the board time to draft a new bylaw, which requires hearings.
No, because there's no general bylaw.
That's the reason you couldn't slam one in this special town meeting. You don't have time for the hearings.
The problem with rescinding the first is that we're opening it up now to that five acre rule.
But what I just told you is...
But if we didn't rescind the, if we didn't rescind the Article Twenty-seven and then, and we can't even have an opinion on the general bylaw? Like personally, we could, can, but as a board, we're... So if, if the Article Twenty-seven says that is, it gives us the minimum protection versus going back to the other one. And then we work on that for the next town meeting? And the bylaw, the general bylaw gets voted on and bans all recreational use?
It's a two-step, but it would be the first step. My point is though that...
And you're saying to buy time?
I'm saying that Article Twenty-seven doesn't afford any protection. I think that's, that's false because we don't have uses that mirror the uses that you're considering. And when I said that, I said, is there any greenhouse in town that requires power to operate?
Well, I'm assuming that we only, we only allow greenhouses in agricultural zones, so I'm assuming...
I also think it's false to say that marijuana is agriculture because it's grown indoors.
I assume that they are growing a greenhouse because we don't allow warehouses in agricultural zones. So I'm assuming it will be a formal, it will be, it will be a greenhouse. Because we won't, I mean, we have, we do...
My point is there's no similar uses to fall back upon.
My other fear is that if we do rescind, and I understand what you're saying completely, is that we're gonna have what happened when we were about to put in the solar moratorium. Is all of a sudden we had nine solar arrays come before us so that they could be grandfathered over. So what you're gonna see is all these people with five acres or more get approached by these marijuana grow facilities who have deep pockets and you're gonna see them spread all over town because all of a sudden they're going to override, if you will, anything.
Not even five acres, but so, I mean, look at how many lots we have with twenty acres. So even, even, it'd be, it'd be everybody coming in. I mean, of course, yes, there's the two steps, we'll have to go to the selectmen. But I mean, who's to say if the selectmen will approve or disapprove everything that comes through them? I just, at, at, at least there's something, the old way, there is nothing. It's just, it cuts down the current ten acres to five acres. And is it, that, that's the only thing that it's gonna, and, and it will also allow more retail and the medical and retail. But the only, the only thing good about the new zoning is that it limits the medical and retail.
Exactly.
And it, and it, and it does, it does the ten acres for the agricultural. Take that away and now we can get as many retail and as many medical as can fit on...
So we have a fall town meeting, is there a new bylaw in the works?
We all...
We don't know what's gonna happen on April first.
April first?
On August first, sorry. So depending on what happens on August first, I, I think now we're all getting to be professionals on this stuff and we know, I, I think having actually an advisory or having even town, if we wanted to create a committee and all, and meet with the planning board and work together to make everybody, I'd be more than willing to invite.
Absolutely.
I know that there's a, there's a, there's a core team of, you know, of the... To sit down and work together and create one.
We wanna make this better, we just don't wanna make it broken before we make it better, yeah.
Believe me, I think this is very bad. I mean, I'm saying it in public, this is very, very, very bad. I'm scared that if we rescind Twenty-seven, we're gonna have a lot more. And at this point where we have the medical and retail limit and what we're doing is getting rid of that medical and retail limit. I truly believe it's, it's, it's bad, but I think we'll make it worse.
I think we know what you wanna do here and I'm not sure rescinding it will accomplish that.
We know what we...
But, but I think we agree, things need to, need to change a bit.
And if we honestly, if we could have changed it on the floor, we could have a new, a new written up, a very conservative one for August first, if we needed to. We would, we could, but at this point, we can't. We just...
It's all or nothing.
So I would like to say that the bylaw we enacted went through a public hearing that this board attended, that people attended and made comments on. This board voted all in favor of that presented document, which is the same document that went to town meeting, that was debated at town meeting, and amendments were made, and that was the vote of the town. This document does give you control. It requires special permits for retail marijuana sales in only three zones. This document requires a marijuana product manufacturer to get a special permit in three zones and it can only be in an agricultural district when it's combined with another use. This document, this bylaw, only allows indoor cultivation, does not allow outdoor cultivation. In those places, it allows indoor cultivation, it requires a special permit from this board. You are not allowing consumption of marijuana in public. You are not allowing marijuana uses, including retail dispensing, okay? And medical marijuana treatment only in an A-zone with a special permit and only in CB, IG, and BEP with a special permit. You only allow a third-party marijuana transporter with a special permit in CB, IG, and BEP. Prior to this bylaw being in place, it was the wild, wild west out there. The issue that people seem to be misunderstanding is, is that Forty-A, Section Three took the definition of agriculture and said marijuana, except for growing hemp, was not an agricultural use. Only for that section, for no other purpose in any other law, in any other regulation. Okay? So people that keep saying agriculture and marijuana and it's not allowed, no, that is not true. Charlton calls a huge swath of property agriculture. It has nothing to do with growing crops or raising cattle or doing any of that. It's a name assigned to an area. We allow all sorts of things in the agricultural zone. We allow dwellings, residential developments, private schools, daycare centers, hotels, recreational facilities for gainful profit. Nothing in our bylaw said that agricultural zone was for single-family homes only. Nothing in our zoning bylaw tells you what a type of building is. It's what's going on in that building. Just because it's a metal-skinned building doesn't make it anything. The use in that building is what governs my decisions. Our bylaw, prior to this, and still continues now, to say indoor commercial horticulture, floriculture establishments, e.g. greenhouses, are allowed with a Y in every zone, anywhere. We did not have a marijuana bylaw, we had no regulation. That is the underlying zoning that I'm looking at. And I have to use this book regardless of what people think. It is analysis of what is going on in that property, in that building. We allow retail in all sorts of places, community business, IG with special permit. Medical marijuana sales is a retail use. It is just like going to CVS with a script for an antibiotic and getting it. Recreational marijuana or adult-use marijuana, those who are over twenty-one, can get liquor at a certain store in town. If I'm over twenty-one in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I can buy recreational marijuana, just like I can buy beer and wine. Going back, rescinding this bylaw, regardless of what people understood or misunderstood, read or didn't read, thought they knew, I'm sure they know because my life has been figuring this out for the past year. I have talked to more lawyers and experts than anybody else I've ever talked to on any zoning issue. So if we rescind this bylaw, it's gonna be bad. The thing that turned this whole operation upside down, as the attorney pointed out, was that we had preemptive zoning. We have the notion of exemplary, I'm sorry, exclusionary zoning. The mantra that I have learned for fifteen-plus years, if it doesn't fit in the table, it's not allowed. And that makes sense because in nineteen eighty-seven, we did not think there were, there was gonna be fiber optics. We did not think there were gonna be cell towers. We had no idea what was coming down the road. So the general scheme of zoning is to preclude it unless you allow it. The people that helped us, or screwed us up, depending upon who you wanna ask, is the state legislature that says if your community voted yes for recreational marijuana and you don't have a bylaw, what I just told you is what I have to do. Keep the bylaw in place.
Margaret Russell, Old Worcester Road. I have a question about this bylaw. Does it limit the number of cultivators in town?
It was, when we voted for it, we thought it did, but unfortunately it does not.
It does not. So why do you think that without it, we'd have less protection?
The retail, the, the size limit, which is ten versus the five, which would be our current. And we, the maximum number of retail and medical are four, so two retail and two medical are the max. So it would, those small little retail shops and, you know, which sometimes retail is allowed in agricultural too, there, more people could put up more shops. It's clearly, there's clearly an issue with it. We, we clearly didn't do what we intended to do. However, by rescinding it, I truly believe we're getting in a worse, a worse situation. We will have the same thing with the solar, when we, when the solar moratorium was getting voted, coming up, we got ten, ten or plans to grandfather in. And if that happens, we could, we could go ahead and try to fix and control and do that limit like we planned to. But in the meantime, we could get all, everybody grandfathered in. At least right now, we have some control and we can head toward doing the route of a moratorium, which would be absolutely fabulous at this moment. And, or doing, heading toward the general bylaw change. And if that's what the townspeople believe, that we want no retail, just medical, that I, that would be great too. So it's, it's just a matter of protecting the, we only have, we have minimum protection. But it's better than the five acres and unlimited retail and medical. Believe me, I'm the, I've been...
And didn't it score about twenty acres?
Right now, it's ten.
Ten and two and two.
Ten and then, but only two retail and two medical. So it's something versus nothing. And then it, it, the, the target is to get it back to, to, to have the citizens vote.
I have another question. Do we allow manufacturing in agricultural zones? Or light industrial in agricultural zone?
To what I said, is this not what you think it is, what it is determined to be? Growing of crops is not manufacturing.
No processing crops. The other night, ForeScore called their proposal light manufacturing and it's located in an industrial zone. My question is, is that same type of use allowed in an agricultural zone under the zoning?
I wonder, Katie, could you address the question of accessory manufacturing for agricultural uses?
So again, this is, these are issues that are gonna be determined on a sort of a case-by-case basis and that initial determination is made by the building commissioner. But in many agricultural contexts, there is, there are accessory-type uses that, that are part of the agricultural operation because they are customarily incidental to that use. So for example, if you have an apple orchard, they may be baking cider or donuts or something. If you, if you have a winery, you have a vineyard, you may be making wine. And lots of times, those are customarily incidental to the growing and processing of those crops. And so they fit under that big umbrella of an agricultural use. But it's really a case-specific question that has to be determined by the, by the building commissioner based on an application that comes before him.
The standard, when we, we normally are doing these reviews, we're looking at, we're looking at sound and we're looking at light and we're looking at setbacks and traffic. And we would have the same types. So we don't really know what to expect. In my mind, I'm thinking that, with my research, that there, these just absolutely huge generators that power these because they're, they're like, like little cities, they're temperature-controlled and there's all these computers and again, all this, this electric isn't coming, like there's huge generators and huge fans and they're so loud. What, what protection, I mean, it just seems you're, 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 you're on the, you're living on the street, you're living on that road and you're listening to this? Do we, can, I mean, I know we can't deny for unreasonable purposes, but can all the safeguards, what's considered going one step too far when I say this is the, they do that, the sound study and this is what it sounds like with, you know, with three twenty in the background and they can't go over ten decibels? Is it the same rule as, and is that twenty-four hours and those kind of things? Is that completely under our purview and...
So, so, one minute, one more one. Wouldn't we require a, an environmental impact study before anything like this? We could go in or as a board, we could, we could ask for an impact study and sound monitoring, light monitoring, everything that, so that they don't exceed certain levels?
That would be part of the special...
That would be part of, that would be part of the special permit site plan we're doing.
Which we have now, which if you do away with Article Twenty-seven, you will not have the site plan review.
That's, so that's another, that's what I was kinda getting at. So by, if we get rid of Article Twenty-seven, we can't control the sound, we can't control the light. Because right now, I'm expecting the neighbors not to have, not to be able to see the lights, whatever buffering needs to be done. I expect there not to be any additional set, so that, I'm sure if you guys have watched the five oh eight hearing, there's, they do the initial study and they, the sound. So again, at least it allows us to put in major controls, you know, traffic studies on the road. Should they have three hundred employees going down Old Worcester Road? Or should, you know, should it be, look, I mean, should we look at other access points and things like that? Now, what you're doing when we rescind the Article Twenty-seven, it's gonna take that control away from us and we, we will no longer be able to say, you know, no, 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 you need to... and we, we will no longer be able to say, you know, no, 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 you need to, you need to, our traffic engineer says that you're gonna, you're gonna destroy that road. You now need, you need to do a curb cut because that's what the engineer says.
Sidewalks in, or-
You know, et cetera, et cetera, that's-
But you just said this is all they're grandfathered in, so it won't affect them anyway.
We still have site plan. We still, we still have-
Because of the agreement, because of the assigned agreement, we have site plan right now.
Correct, even over them. It's just, we can't stop them from coming in, but we can still site plan.
But it doesn't change the agreement. You'd still have the agreement.
Agreement.
But only for them, we wouldn't have it for anybody else.
Correct.
Do we have a lot of other people waiting in the waiting room?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So I'd like to point out that no other community appears to have this problem. Nobody else made the determination that light manufacturing should be allowed in an agricultural district. I mean, I have a chart, I went around, I asked every other town for their zoning, I compared them all. No other community in central Mass has this problem. Why do we have this problem? Why do we think that this is a good use? I, I can't comprehend it. And what can citizens do if they disagree with the use, the determination?
I'll let Kurt-
When building permit is issued, you can appeal it.
That's it?
You have 20 days. Isn't it 20? You have 20 days from-
Hmm, 30, 30 days, I forget.
Okay. You have a period of time, once a building permit is issued, to appeal it.
You can appeal, you could appeal for the, the zoning and-
So, you have to remember, you know, the planning board has criteria for site plan review. That, that criteria includes drainage, lighting, no spillage of that lighting off the, the property, you know, proper drainage, proper traffic circulation. All of those things are in play under this, this just enacted bylaw and the agreement, okay? There are other overlapping people who have jurisdictions. People are concerned about the noise and the size of the proposed generator. I haven't even seen a plan. Maybe they decide that they're not gonna put a generator in there. Maybe they're gonna buy commercial power. I don't know, I have nothing to rule on because there's nothing there. They have been given an advisory opinion that it is an allowed use with a why, because it's an indoor greenhouse. They have lots of smart lawyers, we have good smart lawyers on our side. I did not make this decision in a vacuum. DEP has say over this. DEP has say, say over the air quality that comes out of these generators. DEP has say, and our local board of health has say about the 10 decibel of, over ambient noise. I can tell you that there's a huge, huge generator that's 10 times the size, or 20 times the size in this community. Nobody hears it.
Who's side do you want? Who's side do you want?
So-
Trying to find a solution, trying to find a solution.
I, I-
Instead of an excuse.
I'm not making up excuses, I'm stating facts, okay? Generators run at Masonic Home. There are generators in the building at Masonic Home. There are generators all over the place that people don't hear, okay? The plain and simple part that I have to do is look at that book, be given a set of facts, and given an answer. That's your opinion, and you're entitled to appeal that at the appropriate time.
Our opinion, because we're here now, we're here now.
Okay.
I mean, in order, we, we gotta keep, we have to keep it super civil, I, I-
It is very emotional, but-
We all understand, we've all-
Yeah, Steve Corona, 17 Old Worcester Road extension. So I guess as far as your, your concerns about rescinding and opening it up to 50 people, or 100 people, and, and all the fears of that, it's gonna take 2/3 of a vote at the town meeting to rescind, correct? And then town meetings typically last, we might spend an hour on, on an article, and then Article 2 comes, and if we've already got the 2/3, we're probably gonna get the majority on Article 2, correct? So we would be open for an hour to have hundreds of people coming in from all over the world.
If you, if you, if we vote on the, and correct me, if we vote on the bylaw to, to get rid of all-
Everything but medical.
Everything but medical.
Yep.
Then nothing happens until there's an actual ballot vote, correct?
It's a halt until a ballot, correct?
No, it's, it's a two-step process, so you're, you really haven't effectuated the ban until you've had the ballot vote.
But the board would know the intention of the citizens, and why would they go against it?
Because at this point, intentions don't matter.
Thank you. They never did.
We've actually already had that voted a year ago. And I guess I was confused about the hemp, because everything I read on, the difference between agricultural is, they call, the state of Massachusetts calls, you're allowed to grow hemp in an agricultural zone.
That is correct.
But not cannabis.
That's correct. Well, under the state agricultural use exemption, which basically says agricultural land is exempt from zoning, marijuana is not part of that state law exemption. Hemp can be grown on agriculturally exempt land.
Exempt land.
And correct me, so the law, so the original, the original zoning interpretations across the state, the, that, the law behind that changed somewhere in the middle, correct? Because we were all reading that marijuana was not to be grown in agricultural zone, and not be, not considered a crop. At some point, did, did the law actually change to, to, to change? Because that's, that's what, I mean, that, what I was reading. So that's why I'm confused with that.
Yeah, so, so just to state this another way, when ballot question 4 passed, everybody with agricultural land across Massachusetts said, hooray, I can grow, I can grow marijuana anywhere as long as I have 5 acres. It doesn't matter what zoning district it did in, it doesn't matter what any of the underlying zoning is. If I have 5 acres of land, and I wanna designate it as a farm or for agricultural use, I can grow marijuana on it. And the, the legislature's put a stop to that by saying, what we're gonna do for that state agricultural exemption is we're gonna take marijuana out of it. But what they did not do was take it out of any other type of, of local control, because many, many communities had their own agricultural zoning in place. And that agricultural zoning that was enacted at a local level is not the state exemption. It's, it's local agricultural zoning. So the state exemption that applies to 5 acres or more doesn't say anything about greenhouses, and it doesn't, you know, so, so Charlton has a zoning bylaw that says you can grow, in our agricultural zoning district, you can have a greenhouse, and it's by right. And that's a different type of agricultural control than what we're talking about with respect to the state exemption, which basically says, if you have 5 acres, it's fair game for farming.
And the town can't?
So the town acts its own agricultural controls and, and imposes different kinds of agricultural restrictions that are outside of that state agricultural exemption. So the fact that the legislature took action to, to further define agricultural, or the exemption, really had no effect on your own local agricultural zoning.
Okay, explain it. So if, if the repeal changed to a moratorium, is that outside the scope of, of what? Instead of enacting a appeal, somebody changed it to, not a appeal?
The repeal, the repeal.
Change, okay, we're not gonna repeal it, but we're gonna create a moratorium, is that outside the scope? Because that would solve-
Or is that up to the town moderator?
I mean, questions of scope are obviously up to the moderator. I think that is a pretty clear example of being outside the scope, because it's a completely different zoning control that you would be putting in place. It's not just a repeal, but it's a, a freeze on zoning. It's, it's something completely different.
The repeal, you're opening it up, the moratorium, you're shutting it down.
Yeah, yeah.
So has, have papers been put in to start the moratorium process? I, no, I'm just asking because I know, I'm, we have, we have, we have the most active citizens in this, in this room right now. So I, if, if, that would be another citizen's petition.
Could be the planning board initiative.
Or a, or a planning board, and can, how long does-
But it has to go to town meeting.
But it has to go to town meeting, they will-
Couldn't there be another special town meeting sooner than, probably not right?
Could be, or the selectman could call one.
So, so how long does it take after a citizen's petition, petition to get another, to get another special town meeting?
45 days.
So 45 days, and if we did it, we would have to wait till town meeting?
We wouldn't have to wait to town meeting.
But it's up to the selectman, maybe call a town meeting.
But the select, if, if we, um-
No, but I'm saying, we have this meeting August 1st. You're talking about waiting till after that meeting before we get a plan for another town meeting? You don't have to.
You need 45 days.
You need 45 days. But we could start the 45-day clock from now.
Well, but you don't have a bylaw in place, and we need to deliberate that carefully before you go forward.
Okay. I think we could, in a meeting or two, I think we could come up with a new bylaw within legal guidelines and satisfy everybody's-
Well, but I think you'd wanna take, you know, public comment in the drafting of the bylaw.
Oh, of course.
Sure.
I bet you that we have people here that already have one all ready for us to review.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll, give us 20 minutes.
But, can we do that? Would we like, so we have to vote on this, but do we want to, I'm, I wouldn't do things right and do what our citizens want, and what we originally attended, intended is so different than what we have right now. We are all on the same page.
Well, the first step, I guess, is the, the town meeting on August 1st.
Right, that's what we're here to discuss.
If, if the town comes forth and says, no, we don't wanna repeal what we have, then I guess it's pretty clear. So it's really up to, it's up to the people now.
So you're saying that if they don't wanna repeal it, then we don't need a moratorium and we go ahead, or?
Well, we could, we can then look at maybe drafting something that's a little stricter, a little bit more, more, you know, conservative. But I, I think right now, we've got a, a very vocal majority in this room that, that wants us to go through. It's really up to the town.
Yeah, the, the whole rest of the town.
And it's up to their vote.
It really is, so I think it's up to us to, to, to let the town decide.
Absolutely. So we, it's getting really late, and we just need to-
Two quick, two quick questions.
Mine's fast. Kristen Castigan, Carroll Hill Road. It's a technical question for you. They've discussed the words moratorium and ban. Currently, that second article is a general bylaw requesting basically a ban. If you were to make a motion on the floor to amend it and add a, until such and such a date, would that turn it into a moratorium, and would that require a two-step process? Or is that just a simple, you know, we're delaying it until such and such a date, at which time they could have a better bylaw ready? Like, suppose the such and such a date was fall town meeting, or December, or whatever date you pick?
Yeah. I think the problem with that is that there's pretty clear case law about the fact that a moratorium needs to be enacted as a zoning bylaw, and right now, your ban is, is proposed as a general bylaw.
Yeah, okay, I just wasn't sure it was, thank you.
Kathy Benjamin, 44 Old Worcester Road. I would like to ask a question of this board. Given the agenda, has the discussion here violated open meeting laws?
In what way?
At, your, your thing here says, public hearing, citizens' position to rescind the marijuana zoning bylaw. It sounds like you have done a lot more here tonight than just discussed the rescind of this bylaw.
We're taking information and gathering information, because we're, we're expected to make a decision tonight whether to,
Recommend.
Recommend or not recommend that petition. So we're trying to get as much information as we can.
And I think that you are also providing advice. Thank you.
We have a person here to give us advice.
We have an-
Okay, it's late.
All right, so let's, I'm gonna close the public hearing and, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I think we've discussed this.
So we need to, we need to vote on whether to recommend or not recommend. I, I think the town should get a chance to vote on it. I'm just not sure that this petition will serve the purpose that they really want it to, to serve. And it worries me that we're, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
So legally, we need 2/3, right? 2/3 of our, we need the, the, the majority, not just the majority, we need a supermajority, correct? No, do we just need the majority of our?
We need 3 out of 4 votes.
To, to vote for.
No, here, right now.
To recommend.
For our recommendation.
To recommend or not recommend?
Uh, we need at least 3.
Just, so, so, and it, and it can't be, and if it doesn't, and if we vote 2 and 2, it can't go to town meeting? So we need to either vote for it or against it, just to get it to town meeting?
Yeah, that, there's, there's, because the board isn't even split this evening, there's some legal concern about the fact that a split vote is not an affirmative or a negative recommendation. It's a tie, and there's case law that talks about the fact that a tie is not technically a recommendation. And in the absence of a, a recommendation, there needs to be a 21-day period prior to the town meeting being held, which you do not have. So unless, if, if the vote is split, that would preclude town meeting from taking action on this citizen petition article.
So if the citizens' petition passed, and the bylaw passed at the town meeting, would that, we could still get inundated with requests, and if that, if, if the attorney general nixed the, the bylaw, everything would still go through, and, and we'd be without a, without any controls. Right? That's the only thing I worry about, is if we get rid of the, the zoning bylaw. Right now, we have controls, some controls. If we get rid of that zoning bylaw, and the attorney general does not approve the general bylaw, we're, we're left with, with, with no-
Nothing.
No zoning at all, and, and no authority. Okay.
Right, and technically, our vote doesn't, all our vote does is allow it to go to public meeting. So, we need to, either, 3 of us need to be, 4 or 3 of us need to be against it, and then it goes to public meeting, but it just goes with our recommendation. That's what, or, or, that's, that's all, the only thing we're voting on. So us voting means nothing. Us voting means that 3 of us agree on something, it goes to town meeting. That, it's just a technic, tech, technicality, really. I feel that it should go to town meeting.
I agree it should go to town meeting. But I'm not sure that I would want it to pass. That's the only thing right now, is it's, you, you don't, you understand what I'm saying? I, I, I see what you, you guys wanna do, and I really understand that. And, and I like that too, but it's-
I'd like to see a better one crafted, and I think we should revisit this. I, I'd like it to go to town meeting, I would just like to see a better one go to town meeting, because my fear is that it will be passed with the, that people will pass it with the assumption that they are nixing marijuana completely, and what they're nixing is zoning for marijuana. And so what I would prefer to see, I'm not saying that we can't, we shouldn't fix it. I just don't think this is the good fix. And I'd like to see it, we go to town, I'd like to see a better amendment, or a better bylaw, go to town, go to another, go to a special town meeting. I just don't think this is the one to do it.
Is there anything that concerns you about the attorney general going back? Yeah, we, the-
The hearing's closed.
The hearing's closed, we just- And we're in, we're in agreement. My, my vote would have went different ways. If we could amend this on the floor, my vote would have gone, my vote, I, I already have my, like, my vote's in my head right now, but now. If it, if we could have amended it on the floor, I'd be, this would be perfect, but yours, but we, and we still can if the mediator, mediator allows it.
But that's a lot of ifs.
And, you know what I'm saying, so if the mediator allows it, and it doesn't get questioned, but at least it will kinda hold things to, for us to get a good handle on.
And then if the mediator allows it, and the AG says, that was way out of the scope, we lose again, so.
Right, so it doesn't, again, it doesn't matter how we vote, so make a motion and some brave person make a motion.
I'm the new guy, but I've been on for 27 hours now, so.
All right, do, do, can I, can I? Do I have a motion for the, the, the board to not recommend the rescinding of Article 27 because it allows us more protection than we would have without it?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion to not recommend. I'd like to see a better one.
Aye.
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 So we voted to not support, technically, it goes to town and the voters will support, um, this campaign.
Nothing changed other than our opinions.
Can I ask a question when we have town meeting? Uh, will the planning board, a representative of the planning board explain some of this to town meetings?
Yes, so-
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
And Kurt will be there as well.
One lucky number of citizens.
Yes, he's taken a sip, you did that to him.
The, the thing presented baldly without any pros and cons given.
Correct.
This has been very interesting tonight.
Sure, sure.
I would hope that that would-
And I, I think we would explain our position.
And why we took that position.
And why we took that position.
And we explained our position at the last town meeting also.
We did.
So probably what you're going to hear is maybe more of the same. Um, and really, the public meeting is closed, so I don't know if we should be talking about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks. This is probably the last time I'm ever going to see you.
I'm not on the job, I'm not here.
You may see me on August 1st. We'll see.
It's a tough, it's tough. It's, it's, I get it, I-
Do we have any more business or do we want to do more?
But just can we adjourn this meeting?
I was hoping for different answers.
Well, we have both management and we have-
So you wanted, we have one last thing?
Please.
Sure.
Does it say anything in there? I do have one question, and Don brought it up. Um, if we are covering ourselves for the cost of hazmat materials? I just wanted to check that with, with Mike. And I think this was the one that we were looking maybe?
Yeah, and I think we were looking at it, and we were, they were saying that there's some, there is money in here for that, but that there's a recycled value for the, for the, for the materials within there. And what we get from recycling is offset the cost.
Okay.
So right now, right now, there's a market for it. That's not to say 10 years, 10 years from now, there may be no market for it and we may not have enough of a bond. That's the only thing that worries me about the bond. Because I, I'd prefer not to include recycle, um-
Paybacks.
Paybacks for-
I think that's smart because, yeah.
Because-
Things get outdated.
You don't agree with that?
No, no, I've, we, no, it's, no, I would require a whole bond. There was a big argument, a discussion about, um, when we negotiated, renegotiated and updated the pilot agreement for Millennium Power because there is some scrap metal value there. There is some salvage value there. And their argument, you know, their, their, their point was is that we didn't need to post a $30 million bond because this has value. But you're trying to have this crystal ball to, to what the value is. So William and I were having a discussion with some solar developers today, and we were asking the question, what would you see happening in 20 years?
China doesn't want our steel anymore.
Well, that's, I, our steel's not too bad, but they don't want our paper.
They don't want our paper, they don't want our plastic.
Right. So what's going to happen? You know? There will be some value, but, you know, the, the technology may totally change. They were telling us that the, they figure in the cost that inverters have a 10-year lifespan. They figure, now, if they get more than that out of them, that's great. But, but that's the thing that goes, it's not the panels.
Now, do we re-review the bond every couple of years to make sure that it's keeping up with inflation?
We do for-
Panels become less efficient, and more efficient panels come out all the time. So it may become to a point where this facility isn't worth running anymore. So let's just get rid of that one. Because we've got panels out there that are 10 times, 10 times better.
Well, they just change the panels, right? No? As they grow?
They don't change the panels. They're saying that the depreciation of, of efficiency in the panels is only like 1%.
Sure.
Oh.
It's not, it's not very big.
But the efficiency of new panels coming out is, is growing a lot, a lot much of the time.
Oh, yeah, and, and we've seen that in, um, the, the 20-some acre one off of Carpenter Hill Road.
Right, it was much smaller with the same amount of power, right?
Right. In, in the time of presentation and the time of, it, it shrank three acres.
Yes.
This, uh, this document says that, um, um, the interior materials are silicon-based and are not considered hazardous materials. Disposal and a landfill will be permissible. So apparently there have been no hazardous materials-
Okay, okay.
-in the panels.
Somebody else says there is.
My understanding was there's cadmium in there and which is, which is toxic.
Batteries are toxic, too.
Exactly.
Don't throw them in the trash.
Did we, we wrote up this? This is a document?
No, the developer wrote it up, then Mike reviewed it.
And Mike reviewed it.
And he said it was fine.
He said it was fine.
He said it, yeah.
That's, I'm, like, like I said, that's one question I have going forward when we're looking at new regulations that-
Would you want to hold off on signing this, or can it, that, that, or?
Well, I, you know, we've approved so many of these like that, I don't know if holding off on this is-
And if Mike thinks it's okay. But anything in the future, we want, definitely want to look into it.
So what's kind of the question?
Are we, are we holding up on the, like, what's hap, what's going to happen if we wait till the next meeting to talk about these? It's not going to be a big deal?